Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Walter Mulliken is the pastor at Portland Avenue Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stone Cypher if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I pray for you this morning. Father, we come to you in Jesus' name and we thank you for life and health. We thank you for liberty and freedom. We thank you for this great city that we call home. Lord, we thank you for these who lead us at the city level. Lord, I pray for them this morning that they would make decisions and wisdom and righteousness, Lord, seeking your truth and seeking the best for all above what would be best for the individual. So, Lord, I pray that your favor and your blessing might be upon them, their families, and, Lord, upon this city. And again, we thank you for your great love and care for us because we ask it in the name above all names. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. We have an appointment to the Oklahoma City Post Employment Benefits Trust on item 3A. I'll look for a motion there. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 3B, as the council has probably seen in their packet, is a memorandum regarding the American Indian Cultural Center and Museum. As each of you know, the state has passed a law that has given the city the opportunity to work into an arrangement where we would finish the construction and manage the facility off into the future. And we have put together a council committee to examine the city's options. We're going to hire a consultant to do some fresh marketing studies so we can get the information we need to kind of make a decision about whether or not we want to pursue this. Would like to get it done sometime this summer, but if there's any feedback at this point, we'd be glad to hear it. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory in any packets today.
Wiley Williams would like to make a clarification on a couple of the legal points in the memorandum.
Okay.
In regard to the mayor's memo, there's bullet number four dealing with the revenues. I want to make it clear that when I drafted the basis of which this memo is based on, the term revenues is not to be interpreted as gross revenues. The statute itself has a clarification of what revenues is, but it's not gross revenues. So, take that.
So, it's revenues from specific revenue opportunities?
Okay, so it defines the word revenue so that it would not include, say, donations to the museum or investment income?
Well, yeah. What we're getting to is part of it is like when we operate it, when we sell tickets and things like that, we only have to account for the net profits from that, not from the gross revenues. So, there are certain items that have been kind of discounted so we can operate it and not count that as revenue.
Well, this may not be the time to ask any of these questions, though, but there are so many things in this that are really unclear and, you know...
Absolutely.
...talks about the revenue split after $7 million, but it also says that they get... It would appear that that would include not just the museum operations, but the operations of anything else on the rest of the...
No, it's limited to certain factors, and that's why I want to make clear.
Okay, all right.
The term revenues here is more limited than gross revenues from all the operations.
Okay.
Can you submit the provisions that define revenue to us in a supplemental paper?
It clarifies, it really doesn't define it. It limits it.
Okay, just give me the reference.
We can do a follow-up memo.
Yeah.
Explain what that is.
I'll do a follow-up, a little more clear.
And then the second point has to do with the $9 million payment.
Pardon?
The second point has to do with the timing of the $9 million.
Right, the timing of the payment. I have in the memo that it's the transfer of the development site. It's really the transfer of the museum site, so it's no later than at that time, which could be 20 years down the road. But more realistically, it's anticipated we'll give it during construction.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Wiley.
Just wanted to clarify those points. And there are two RFPs that are out there. One has to do with looking at the operations of the museum and taking a look at what the potential revenue is off of the operations and the operating costs. And then the second has to do with the asundered development for the 140 acres that is not the museum and the potential for that, the timing for that development, and we're looking at that with and without the operation of the Native American Cultural Center. So, if it isn't American Native Cultural Center, what is the potential? If it is American Native Cultural Center, what is the potential?
I mean, I do think one thing that's pretty clear from this is this is a loan. This $25 million in bond sales from the state is really a loan to us.
I don't know that they look at it that way.
They may not.
But that's what the document...
I think that's probably...
But it could be.
Probably correct, but I...
All right. We're on item four of the council agendas, the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the journal for June 2nd and 9th, and item B is to approve the journal for May 19th and 26th. Is there a motion on the journal? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item five is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, just a couple this morning on page 22. On item 9F1, item F 4509 Northwest 33rd Street, we asked that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then moving on, I'm still on page 22, under item 9G1, item E 1433 Woodland Way, we asked that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Item six is revocable permits.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Yes, Kelly.
Kelly Work is my name. If it's appropriate at this time, there is an item later on your agenda that we would request a continuance of. It's item 9N. I represent... This is the proposed annexation of the Midtown area into the Downtown Business Improvement District. I've just been retained by owners of a couple of properties that are concerned, and if you are able and willing to, we would just like to have this item deferred for a week or two to give us an opportunity to visit with the proponents. If that does not present a problem, we would make that request. If not, we certainly understand.
Well, you mentioned it was uncontested. It is contested.
Okay.
But we're going to have a presentation today, give people more information, and we'll see where the council goes with it. But we're not approving it today, right? We're just moving it forward?
We're approving.
Approving the resolution?
We're approving a resolution on it this morning, so I'm unclear. Is there a second step on that? Maybe staff...
Yes.
Hey, Jay, is there a second step on the Midtown after we approve the resolution? If the resolution were to be approved this morning?
Yeah, we would just enter our normal renewal period. So, in September, we'll have two council meetings.
So, if the resolution is passed today, then it would just be getting to the renewal process?
That's right. The petitions just have to be received 60 days prior to that normal renewal meeting, and we have those scheduled for, I think, the first meeting in September and the last meeting in September.
What we're approving today, what we are considering today, though, is the annexation of Midtown into the Downtown Business Improvement District.
Yeah, you're just looking... The council is receiving the petitions and it's allowing the process to move forward and adding them to... Allowing us to add them to the roll for the September meetings.
Okay, so then in the September meetings, we would be looking at the assessment rolls?
Mm-hmm. With Midtown added at that point?
With Midtown added on. So, I mean, for the folks that are here, this is a pretty significant step today.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to be really clear on that.
Okay.
We can certainly address our remarks when the item comes up, Mr. Mayor.
That'd be good. Thanks, Kelly. All right. In our revocable permits, in item 6A, we'll start with an event that is to be held June 27th in Ward 7. It's a request from the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation to host the Stars and Stripes River Festival. Is there anyone here from that organization willing to speak about it? Come on forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Sarah Coleman, and my address is 1214 Northwest 22nd Street, Oklahoma City.
Tell us about the Stars and Stripes River Festival, Sarah.
So, the event is going to be held on June 27th. It'll feature live music, a large fireworks show at the end, bands. There'll be racing all day. It starts from 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m., and we expect about 25,000 people to be there.
My goodness.
Yeah.
All right. It's in Ward 7. How about a motion from Councilman? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 6B is a request from DG Productions, Inc. to hold the Oaks and Acorns Father's Day 5K. Good morning.
Good morning.
Was this their first time you've held this event?
This is first annual, we hope.
Don't remember. I've heard this one before, and it's going to run in Ward 6 on June 21st. Tell us about it.
It'd be the first annual Father's Day Oaks and Acorns 5K, and we'll have a one-mile fun run that'll be all on the Myriad Gardens. We're doing this in conjunction with the Myriad Botanical Gardens.
Okay. And Don, I'll need your name and address for the record.
Don Garrett, DG Productions, 14420 South Meridian.
All right.
Don, is the Myriad Gardens the recipient of... Or are they your nonprofit partner for this event?
Yes, yes.
It's unclear. Great, I would move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And item 6B2 is a request from OKC Pride to host the OKC Pride Celebration Weekend. That weekend will be June 19th through the 21st. It'll be in Ward 2, Northwest 39th Street between Penn and North Young's Avenue. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Michael Clark. I'm the president of OKC Pride. My address is 3724 North Chertel. Just wanted to address the council and thank you for your continued support of OKC Pride. This is our 28th year. We're expecting our biggest pride ever. Our festivities actually began at the Dead Center Film Festival Sunday night. We had a film presented there that we co-sponsored. We have had events scheduled all through the week, every night, but we culminate the weekend of the 19th through the 21st on 39th between Penn and Young's. We have a free concert Friday night, opening with Erica Jane, and then our feature acts are En Vogue and the Village People. I was going to try to get the YMCA song played and see if I could get the council to do it with me, but I was told that was not allowed. But I would invite everyone here to please come out and join us. It's going to be a great concert and a good time. Then we have a two-day arts festival Saturday and Sunday, the 20th and 21st, which culminates in the largest parade in Oklahoma, the OKC Pride Parade, and that goes down 39th Street between Classen and Young's Boulevard.
All right, and it's in Ward 2. Ed, you want to make a motion?
Can you talk for a second about the mental health and substance abuse symposium?
Yes. A couple of the new events we have... One of the big new events, we have an event, Pride Day at the Zoo tomorrow, and we are putting on a mental health symposium to help educate mental health professionals and service agencies on how to deal with people, especially the trans community, but the entire LGBTQ community. We've had some really great response on that. We've had help from OSU and several of the local agencies to help put that on, and it's going to be a really helpful thing that I think will be a big annual event to help be more inclusive and make sure that people are more understanding of special needs in that community.
Great. I'll move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Good luck. And item 6B3 is an event called Do Draper Twice. It would be held July 11th and July 12th. Is there anyone here representing this organization? This one's been going on for a while. It's in Ward 4. Pete, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd move approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 6B4 is an event called Walk a Mile in My Shoes. It's an event on June 20th, and it's in Bricktown, which is in Ward 7. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. Are you Grant Johnson?
That's me, yes, sir.
Grant, we'll need your name and address, please.
Okay, Grant Johnson, 215 Northeast 28th Street.
All right. And tell us about Walk a Mile in My Shoes.
This will be the fifth annual year for Walk a Mile event. It's an event to promote foster care awareness and adoption awareness in Oklahoma, and we expect 4,000 to 5,000 individuals. It's a family, fun-friendly event that individuals can come, hear about the need to become foster parents or adoptive parents, and then we do a one-mile walk around downtown to commemorate the children walking from home to home in need of families.
And it's in Ward 7. John, you...
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Good luck and thanks.
Appreciate it.
All right. We'll recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCMFA, Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Four items. Is there a second on the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We can adjourn the OCPPA, Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Three items. Any comments or questions about the EAT? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Somewhat lengthy consent docket. Any individual comments or questions? Larry?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Larry, you want to get started with AQ?
Just thinking, Your Honor. Debbie Martin asked me to mention this since David Greenwell is not able to be here today, and we share a common border on I-44 going south. The item AQ deals with the traffic signalization and roadway improvements at the intersection of Southwest 104th and I-44 that will be involved in the preparing for the construction of a Walmart supercenter on the northeast corner of that intersection. There was quite a bit of concern and debate during the zoning process on this, and this is a resolution coming forward that says that Walmart is going to contribute $150,000 of the $760,000 to do the improvements at this intersection to provide better traffic flow when the supercenter is built. And so, David Greenwell is the man who did all the work on this, but we wanted to mention it just so that the citizens out there know that the Walmart will be actually depositing $150,000 by the 31st of July of this year for the improvements. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Meg, item AD?
Yes, Mayor, AB, actually.
AD.
I wasn't clear. I just wanted to mention that this is the award of the contract for the municipal court, and we may remember that we had to reject the bids on this last time around, and the project has been value engineered within budget and contract award to CMS Willowbrook. I was not familiar with.
They've done a number of schools for us.
Oh, good. Okay. I didn't recognize the name, but it's nice to see this project going out to bid and get the court's building up adjacent to the new police headquarters.
Which should be done in later this summer, early fall.
Perfect. Thank you. And then David Greenwell also asked that we might just mention briefly items U. And item 1 is a resolution that expresses support for Volunteers of America National Service for a tax credit project for Meadow Cliff Apartments at 7505 South Ross. And item 2 is a companion to that, and it also is in support of $400,000 of community development block grant funds for this same project, both in Ward 5. He just wanted to make us aware. He has met with all the adjoining property owners, and based on the positive response of those property owners, he is supportive of this application that we're being asked to make.
Yeah, sounds like a good project. All right. Any other comments on the consent docket?
Yeah, I was wanting to make sure that nobody signed up to talk about item V, as in victory.
Okay.
Because I know I've gotten a few calls about it, so I want to make sure.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on the consent docket. It passes unanimously. And we're on to the concurrence docket. It's like 13 items. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence docket? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now, we're on to item 9. This begins a series of items that require a separate vote. We'll begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 4. The address is 10701 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently I-1 light industrial, and it would become an I-2 moderate industrial district if approved. Pete?
Has the... I know there's a... An easement that was requested.
The easement has been accepted.
But it has been?
Yes.
Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this matter?
Is anyone here to speak in opposition of 9A1?
I move approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 8101 Northwest 150th Street. It's currently R-1 single-family residential and AA agricultural, and it would become a new planned unit development if approved. Mark?
Yeah, this is an ordinance on final hearing. The applicant is present today. It's mixed-use retail office, as you said. The planning commission recommended approval. There is no one here in protest, so I'd move for its approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9A2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 9548 North Morgan Road. It's currently AA agriculture on R-1 single-family residential, and it would become a new planned unit development if approved. James?
Yeah, this is just an area in between Morgan and the Patrick Turnpike. It has a base zoning of O-2. I think it's a good use for that, for that area. Had a unanimous approval from planning commission, no protests. It's on an appearance corridor, and I believe that the developer has agreed to those guidelines. Have all the TEs been agreed to and written into the document? Okay. So, with that, I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second on 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 604 North Rockwell Avenue. It's currently R-1 single-family, and a part of it is in a spud. Nope, I'm sorry. Misread that. It is R-1 single-family currently. It would be made into a spud if approved. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up for this? This is to bring the zoning in this area in a consistent fashion, and it was approved unanimously by the planning commission with no objection. I move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9A4. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 17701 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently R-3 medium-density residential, and it would become a new spud if approved. Mark?
Yes, thank you. This is an ordinance on final hearing again. It's for an assisted living memory care facility, and the planning commission recommended approval with some modifications. One, interestingly enough, is an eight-foot-tall masonry wall along the south property line. No one is here in protest. I do not know if the applicant... Is the applicant here? Yeah. I'd move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 10959 Southeast 59th Street. It's currently R-1 single-family, and it would become a new spud if approved. Pete?
Has the easement been accepted? I see this. It has been accepted? It says the easement to be accepted. Is it? Yes, it's submitted. Is it there? And all the technical valuations were met? Is that right? Yes. Is there anyone here to speak against this? I move approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B has been deferred until June 23rd. 9B deferred at the beginning of the meeting until June 23rd. Item 9C is a street renaming in South Oklahoma City. This is near what used to be Crossword's Mall. It's now Plaza Mayor. Pete, you okay with this?
I am. I move approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9C1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9C2 is a name change in Ward 7, and it's of Southeast 6th Street between Lincoln and Laird. John?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And item 9C2 passes unanimously. Item 9D is a request for a special permit to allow automobile sales at 2801 North MacArthur Boulevard. Larry, that's in Ward 3.
Has anybody signed up for this?
No, sir.
I move for approval.
And the easement has not been submitted?
This is one, the easement hasn't been submitted. They have an existing sign right at the corner, and we've requested a site triangle easement, and that sign would be in that easement and would make it legal nonconforming. So, they could change out the sign, but if they tried to put a bigger sign, then they wouldn't be... They'd have to get variance from the board.
Is it your advice? We probably should delay this until the easement is approved, I mean, attained? Shall we defer this?
Well, we... It's a request to get the easement. It's not a condition of the approval. So, it's really the council's call to either defer it, and you might want to ask the applicant to explain why he doesn't want to provide it. On easements, it's not a condition of the approval. It's a request, and then the council decides.
Is the applicant present?
Yeah. Come on up. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Ali Almazana. My address is 3724 Northwest 17th.
Okay. And I understand that the issue is about the size of the sign?
The size.
Let me narrow down what we're actually talking about.
At the corner, 27th and MacArthur...
Yes, sir.
New Platts, they provide for a site triangle, so if someone pulls up to 27th to get on MacArthur, there's a clear vision, the traffic coming south of MacArthur.
Yeah.
Well, this is an older lot that didn't have that site triangle easement on the lot. And so, theoretically, if there's not an easement there, someone could put the signs, just a straight pole sign, and probably wouldn't block view of the traffic. But they could put a larger, like a... You know, they could build a monument sign or something in there that could block the vision of the driver. So, we've asked for the easement to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future.
Yeah, I understand that. They explained it to me.
But he doesn't... Have you decided you'll give the easement or no?
What, for that corner?
For the corner.
Well, I asked my partner if she wanted to donate it, but he didn't want to, so... I mean, that's the way it is.
That's where we're at on this one. We're recommending that we have it. Traffic management's looked at it.
But...
If we get it, then they can't put additional improvements in that site triangle later. Right now, he's got a pole sign there.
Yes, I know.
And it probably isn't going to, you know, block the view, but...
Based on this, the way to protect ourselves then is to have the easement in hand, is that correct?
That's correct.
We don't have the easement in hand right now.
That's correct.
So I move for deferral for two weeks.
Okay. A motion, say, do you want to say anything? We're not going to vote on this today and we're going to hopefully get your pardon.
So I have to donate the corner for it to be approval or?
It looks that way, yeah. We're, we're concerned about traffic sites and...
Yeah, they explained that to me whenever I applied for it and I told them I'm not going to put no cars or anything to block the way. If it had to happen, I have, I'll have to move the pole. I mean, I can't move it, you know?
You don't need to move the pole.
Thank you.
We just need the easement to ensure that there won't be some sort of monument sign if it might restrict traffic and become a public safety issue.
Yes, I understand that. And I told them when I applied for it, we're not going to have anything of that in the future. And they told me if the pole fall off, I'm not going to put no signs over there or anything like that. I'm just going to put it on the building. I mean, I have no problem with that, you know?
Well, that, that's not the issue though exactly. I understand it, it might be a short-term solution to address what we're asking about, but this would stay with the property. And so, I mean, if, in other words, if you were to sell this property 20 years from now, someone else could do it.
Yeah, if I donate it to them and I'm going to sell the property, that, I'm not going to sell that part too, right? It's going to be off the, of the property.
Kenny, can you clarify? An easement doesn't mean he's donating the property. It just puts a restriction on what he can do on the property.
Oh, okay.
So you're, you're not losing your property, you're just losing, you're giving up the right to construct something on that piece of property.
But I'm not going to be losing it or anything like that, right?
No, you don't. It's just an easement for that limited purpose.
Right.
Another way you could do this, Bob, is the site triangle area is included in the special permit. You could make that, excuse me, you could make that a condition of the special permit about the sign.
The, the problem with that way is the special permit goes away. It's, the property's zone C3, so if for some reason the special permit went away, then whoever used it for C3 wouldn't have that restriction. So that's, that's why we're asking for the easement as opposed to making it a condition of the special permit.
Okay.
Your Honor, I've been informed that there is no meeting in two weeks, so can we get this done in a week?
It's...
It's up to him.
It's up to them. They have a...
You want a one week or a three week?
Huh?
One week deferral or three week deferral?
So in the, in the way that I'm going to give the permit, I have to give him that corner?
You're not giving the corner.
Just giving the permission of using it, is that what it is?
No, no, we're, we're just restricting the type of sign that can be placed on that corner.
Yeah, I, I was agreeing to that in the beginning.
Okay, so that, that's what that means? That means if you, you're granting the easement?
Okay, because, well, they told me I have to donate that corner.
Yeah, donate's the wrong word.
Okay, well, I, I'll agree to the sign and, and all of that. I mean, I have no problem with it. I was okay with it from the beginning.
Okay.
I don't see any problem.
Let's go for a one-week deferral. I move for a one-week deferral.
And at, in the meantime, if you'll work with city staff on, on the, on the easement issue?
We'll talk to them and explain it.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, thanks. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second on the one-week deferral? All right, cast your votes. That item is deferred one week. Item 9E is three items that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is in Ward six and this is the removal of a five-hour metered parking sign.
Yeah, Mayor, these have to do with the development of the 21C Hotel, which is who brought us, brought it before us. I would recommend approval.
All right, anyone here hoping to speak on item 9E1? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9E2 is to establish a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the south side of Southwest 26 Terrace. Larry, you okay with this?
Yes, anybody signed up to speak?
No.
I'd move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9E2. It passed unanimously. And item 9E3 would establish a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the south side of West Main. And again, this is backed over by the 21C.
Yeah, essentially, this is in the same vicinity as the parking meters we removed, so I would request approval.
Cast your votes. And item 9E3 passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. 9F passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Come on up. Good morning.
Morning.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Mitchell. I live at 904 North Farah Drive. I'm here for item G 12108 Sylvester Drive. The property belonged to my ex-wife, passed away a year ago.
Hold on, just a second. Hold on, I'm just trying to make sure we have the right item here. Okay, so this is item 9G D.
9G 1D. And the property has been secured?
All right, Charles, what, what information do you have on the property?
Well, these are the, these are the last photos we had. They were taken on the eighth.
Is this what it looks like now? Rand, is it Randy?
No, it does not look like that now.
Okay.
It has been secured. The garage door has been, has been closed. The property has been mowed. The yard's been cleaned up and I'm talking with the real estate agent to, to get the house sold.
Okay, sounds like we ought to just leave it on there and our staff will go out and check, but it, it sounds like you shouldn't have any issue. Will you recontact him or does, should he stand?
We can, we, we'll meet with him afterwards and get some information from him, but we will recheck it.
All right, well, first of all, thank you for getting on to this in, in such a quick manner. And if, staff's going to go out there, if they have a further problem, they will contact you.
Okay.
All right? But we're going to leave it on and go ahead and vote on it today.
Okay, great.
All right, thanks. All right, is there anyone else here to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? Yes?
It's the same house, H E 12108 Sylvester Drive.
It sure is. Okay. Sounds like it's the same issue.
It is. After it's checked, we'll, we'll remove it off if it's in compliance. We have two on today that are like that, so...
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
How about a motion then on 9H? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding the removal of property from the abandoned building list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under either of the properties listed under 9I?
Could, Charles, could you just, for the benefit of people watching us, this abandoned property is kind of a new process, so each meeting, we've added properties to this list and if the homeowner, property owner abates the problems, then we will remove it from this abandoned property list.
Yes, that'd be correct. In this particular case, one property's been completely removed. They, they took down the property, removed it, and the other one that's, it was sold.
Great. So, you know, we're beginning to see some of the results of this effort of increased enforcement in creating this structure so that we are actually having...
Yes, that'd be correct.
...difficult properties either removed or put into new hands to be refurbished.
Yes.
Great. It's exactly what we wanted to see. I think this is the first time, so thank you.
All right, is there a motion on 9I?
Seven.
Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 9J is our annual opportunity for a public hearing on the public safety sales tax that was enacted some 25 years ago. Do you want to say something, Jim?
Doug Dollar's going to just go over the process for us. There's two items. J is the public, or we'll do them separately. J is the police public safety sales tax and the next item is the fire public safety sales tax.
Right, each year, we, the council adopts a resolution that specifically directs how those funds will be expended in the police fire sales tax. In 1989, the election and the ordinance that passed that included a specific list of projects that could be funded from that as well as kind of the, the spirit of what, what types of projects will, could be funded. And so you'll see there are what are called listed projects. Those are items that were specifically named on the ballot of the ordinance and then other projects, which were not specifically on the ballot, but fit with the spirit or the intent of the law. And these resolutions are reviewed by the municipal council's office and then each year, at the end of the year, we'll audit those expenses and come back with a report to you to, to verify that the, all the expenses are in compliance with this resolution and the types of projects that you authorize here. So if there's any questions about the specific project, you'll note, if you were to add these up, this is the full budget for the police and fire sales tax that's, we're going to be adopting the budget here in a few minutes. This basically explicitly states how those funds can be expended for police and fire. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Doug? All right, thanks Doug. This is a public hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 9J or 9K? All right, today we're introducing the item and how about a motion then on item 9J2? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And on 9K, same manner, this has to do with fire. And again, this is a public hearing. If anyone hopes to speak today, please signal us. If not, we'll have a motion then on 9K to move it forward. Is there a motion? All right, in a second. Cast your votes. 9K passed unanimously. All right, 9L is our budget.
Mayor, if I could just point out a couple of things on it. This is, unlike the state who whips theirs out in the last five days of legislative session, we actually started with a workshop in, in February and then we introduced it to council six weeks ago. And then over the last five weeks, we've had three full days of budget hearings, which we brought in 10 different departments to do presentations with public hearings, public opportunities for comments. Each of those three days, we've had budget hearings and an opportunity for public hearing again today. This is a $1.2 billion total budget with the general fund budget being $426 million. The three significant changes from last year's budget really are the additional, addition of a, a new fire station to be opened up later next year and so we're beginning to hire 21 firefighters for that fire station. We've added 21 police positions in this year's budget, actually more than 21 positions, but 20, or I'm sorry, 20 uniform positions. And then we've added some money for nighttime to enhance nighttime transit service. We're not where we need to be on nighttime transit service, but it's a further step in that, in that area. We added some money for it last year and adding some more money for it again this year. And those are the three major changes to, to this year's budget. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, and this is a public hearing. Does anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 9L? All right, comments from council before we vote? All right, is there a motion?
Seven.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Jim, thank you and your staff for all the work.
We just, I, I'm going to take David Greenwell's place here and say, remember to shop in Oklahoma City, please. This budget is so dependent on sales tax and so please make an effort to stop retail leakage and shop at home.
And, and to add on to Councilwoman Sayo's comments about shop local, the city of Midwest City, they have signs that basically says, keep your sales tax dollars within Midwest City. There is a sign right off of Reno and Sooner and that was the first time I've seen signs like that. So maybe we need to look into investing in signs like that. That, for, for me, that was the first time and they, they placed a sign in a unique spot where the, where on one side you basically have, well, on one side is Dale City, on the other side is Midwest City, and then another side is Oklahoma City. So I thought that was pretty unique. So maybe we need to look off into that. I'm just throwing it out there, Mr....
Different suburbs have done that in the past. One actually had a line on the, on the, they painted a line on the street when you were entering.
Bethany did.
I wasn't looking at names, but... So that's a point well taken, Mr. Pettis.
We can put up gates. We can stop them.
All right, on to item 9M. This is some public education for fire safety.
It's actually a MOU regarding the, the promotion processes for, for public education and for fire prevention services.
All right, is there a motion on 9M? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9N is a resolution that would recommend staff proceed with some annexation in the midtown area that has to do with the downtown bid and Jane Jenkins is here with a presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm going to talk to you a little bit today about our downtown bid. Many of you are familiar with the work that we have done in, in downtown proper. If you just go to the next slide, this is, these are the boundaries of the current bid and within that are seven different character districts. Brick Town, Deep Deuce, Automobile Alley, Park Plaza, the Central Business District, the Arts District, and Film Row. It has been said in downtown circles on a national and international level that we have one of the most complicated business improvement districts in the country. And this is because we have tailored our business improvement district to be able to provide the needed services for each district individually. It's a complicated formula, but for us, it really, really does work. But DOKC is more than just the manager of the business improvement district. We actually have oversight over an area that goes from the river to 13th Street and from Western to Lottie. So that includes areas that are not currently in the business improvement district, such as the Court of Shore area, the Boathouse District, the OU Health Center, and currently Midtown and the Cottage District, which is all part of, of Midtown. Midtown approached us several years ago looking about a possibility of joining the downtown bid so that they could receive an enhanced level of service and management. This happened as the Midtown area began to grow and be home to more restaurants, retail, housing. The, the vision of a lot of the property owners that have invested in Midtown is that Midtown needs to be a village. It needs to be a neighborhood. It needs to encompass all the elements of, and, of a, of a neighborhood from services, residential, retail, restaurants, all different types of, of uses in that particular area. The area that we are proposing to be part of the downtown bid is outlined here. It's adjacent to the north of the Park Plaza District currently and west of Automobile Alley. Just to give you kind of an orientation, St. Anthony is on the far west district. The areas that you see crosshatched here, street level 2F, these are the areas that we are requesting, that are requesting street level maintenance. And that's an additional level of service, which I will go over in just a minute, but it's largely to provide maintenance and landscaping for the traffic circles on 10th Street that are there. St. Anthony currently maintains those traffic circles. Another strategic in, drawing in the boundary was to include Red Andrews Park so that at some point, as we work on Red Andrews Park, the bid might be a part of making some improvements in that area for the neighborhood. Talking a little bit about bid services, the first level is downtown-wide. That's at the bottom. It looks kind of brown on your screen and all downtown bid rate player, payers will, will pay that level of service. The next level is street level maintenance, okay? So that's what I was talking about in that 2F. Not every single street in the bid receives street level maintenance. It's only where it's been requested. And then the third level above that is sub-district specific, which is based on assessed value and frontage, and then certain amenities. And the amenities are, excuse me, the Underground in the Central Business District and the Canal in Brick Town. So in the Central Business District, if you connect to the Underground, you pay that special assessment for maintenance of the Underground. All of Brick Town pays a special assessment to pay for maintenance of the Brick Town Canal. This is just a, a, a more specific way of looking at it. These are where our street level maintenance services are. If you look at the second level, the west portion, we, we basically divided all of this into pots. When we came into Project 180, we divided downtown into certain Project 180 maintenance levels because as Project 180 goes online and the contractor maintenance contracts expire, then the bid is taking over the maintenance of Project 180. So that's a lot of what you see there. Not all of the district, I mean, again, I say it's a complicated thing. For example, where you see Automobile Alley, the only part of Automobile Alley that pays into street maintenance is Broadway because that's the only part of Automobile Alley that gets street maintenance. A lot of the others are there because they have special amenities that we, that we, that we maintain for them. Brick Town, you know, in particular. And then on the third level, the sub-district and the amenities, Brick Town and Auto Alley both assess themselves on top of the district-wide and street-level maintenance to provide a specific service. In Automobile Alley, this is largely for marketing and for Christmas decorations. In Brick Town, it's for administration, programming, planning, and, and maintaining the Brick Town Association. And then, as I mentioned, we have the Canal and the Underground. Talking a little bit about downtown-wide services for the bid, a portion of the DOKC staff salaries and administrative expenses are paid for out of this and allows for management of the other service areas. It also allows us to market the downtown area and be a partner with other marketing organizations, such as the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention Investor Bureau. We do event production and other programming services for downtown. We have clean and safe programs. We just launched the Downtown Guides Program, which is a hospitality program designed to be able to be friendly to visitors. I have another slide on that later on. And we also do migratory bird control, which is very important because we have a lot of trees in downtown Oklahoma City. We also do special projects, such as the community basketball court that's at the corner of Hudson and Sheridan. We also, out of district-wide funds, provide leadership and advocacy, sub-district board support. We provide support to Automobile Alley, Bricktown, Deep Deuce, and Film Row. These are the four districts that have separate independent nonprofits and boards of directors, and so we work with them to provide staff support for those organizations. Stakeholder representation, we were very involved and active in the Quiet Zone, in advocating for the Quiet Zone, as well as helping raise money for the private sector match to put the Quiet Zone in. We are represented on the MAPS-3 Streetcar Committee, a project that will have definite impacts on downtown Oklahoma City. We do strategic planning. We have downtown residence survey, the Park Avenue Retail Study, the Downtown Development Framework. In the past, we have participated with our partners on studies on housing and the homeless, and we will, we also do a strategic plan about every five to seven years for downtown. Additional funding sources, we are able to access grants and such to be able to put in additional project. One that we're working on now is the ODOT Walkability Grant that will put bike racks in all areas of downtown. We were able to obtain TIF funds to do some maintenance on the canal, some deferred maintenance on the canal, and some TIF funds for the Underground, again, some infrastructure that needed a little bit of an extra boost. We also do marketing and promoting downtown, and this is not just, this is just a really important part of what we do, that we put on a good image of our city to areas in the city as well as outside the city. We want everyone to know that this is a great place to live, work, and do business. So we have a very robust social media program, website creation and content management. We have an e-newsletter, retailers' meetings, sponsorships, advertising. Going back to the retailers' meetings, I think the convening is one of the biggest services that we offer, not just of retailers, of any other interest group that wants to have a voice with downtown. We program downtown. We produce about 15 events a year and sponsor more than 20 downtown events. We also produce events for districts outside the bid for a management fee. For example, Midtown's event, Six Degrees of Bacon, we produce for them for a management fee. If Midtown joins the Downtown Business Improvement District, production of that event will be part of the services that we provide through the Business Improvement District. And we also currently provide assistance with the midweek and Midtown Promotion. This was the Downtown Guides Program that I was talking about. They will give information and directions and provide recommendations for attractions, entertainment, retail, and dining to downtown visitors. The current program will allow them to be out on weekends, busy nights, and attending major downtown events. We hope to grow the program to where they are out more frequently. This is kind of a companion program to the Police Department's Ambassador Program, which is a safety program largely centered in Bricktown and the Central Business District, but this will be in all the districts that are in the Business Improvement District. Okay, the bid service levels within Midtown. Let me see where my notes are. Okay, next slide. That will add, I'm sorry, it's an animation. That just shows you where that adds here, because I'm going to talk about that street level maintenance, and you can go to the next slide. And this is an aerial that shows you those areas that are marked for street level, street level maintenance, and that's where we will provide landscaping, street cleaning, sidewalk cleaning, trash pickup, all of the things that we provide in that. And again, maintenance of the landscape within the traffic circles. Next slide. Shared landscape maintenance, pedestrian trashcans, we'll purchase and install them. We will do ongoing maintenance. We will power wash as needed, and we will have our cool little elephant vacuum cleaner over there cleaning up. Okay, talking about bid service levels within Midtown. That will go up there on the third tier. The Midtown-specific funds will be approved by the Midtown Association Board annually. Currently, these are budgeted at $75,000 and could include, and I want to stress that this has not been budgeted yet, Midtown Board just basically decided on a number that they thought that they wanted to do some special projects, but it could include additional area planning, marketing, holiday direction, event sponsorship, event-related security. We have some pretty big events that currently take place in Midtown, and we've identified a need that we may have to have some additional security onsite in Midtown during those events to manage people and parking and such, and then board administrative support. So this is just, you know, when council, if council accepts these petitions and gives staff the go-ahead to proceed, then the Midtown Association will work to budget this number and bring it back to the council as part of the budgeting process. Comparing that to the other districts, the peer districts, which we're really looking at, Automobile Alley and Bricktown, the total properties, I'm not going to go through all of this, but you can see that Midtown is a pretty big, pretty big portion of it, and you can see that we're able, because of the flexibility of the way our bid is structured, to tailor, you know, every, how we assess things to the, to the needs of the district. For example, the sub-district factors, in Midtown, we are proposing 67% assessed value and 33% frontage to get to the numbers that we need, whereas in Bricktown is the exact opposite, you know? So this is what they would generate at each level and what the sub-district amenities will be.
Jane, you lost me there.
I'm sorry.
So the assessment is different in each of these districts?
How it's, how it is figured is different.
Okay, and that's based on the fact that sometimes it's frontage and sometimes it's just square footage, and so there's a formula that's...
Yes, a formula, and it's really done, Mayor, to look, to get at the number that you kind of see there. We zero budget base every year. For example, and I'm going to use Automobile Alley as the poster child here, property values have increased in Automobile Alley, but we have not increased, we have not captured that increase with the bid, because as to yet, we don't, we don't need that much of an increment to provide the services that we need. So for that case, assessments in Automobile Alley have gone down for the individual property owner, because whereas we want to achieve roughly total assessments in $150,000, each property owner is paying less to get to that number. Does that make sense now? Okay. You can go on. A sample assessment that is, I just show you this slide to show you where the sample assessment would be. District-wide, it would generate 535. This is not in a street level maintenance zone, so it would generate zero, and then for the Midtown-specific fund, it would generate $247, and you can see the formulas that are there. Making the total assessment for this particular property, $783.67.
And what would the square footage of this sample property be?
Square footage is not how it affects, it's the hundred feet.
It's the hundred feet and the, it's the, it's the frontage. The value, under the district-wide, Mayor, the value of the building is 28,000, the assessed value is 28,000. Is that where you got that? Right.
Okay.
And then the frontage, so the square footage of the building doesn't, doesn't matter. This is why in some districts, for example, in the Central Business District, where your buildings have a small footprint but a big value on them, you know, and this is sort of like, for example, Leadership Square. Leadership Square has a block of frontage, but it's got two towers that are, you know, 30 stories tall, and so it's got a higher assessed value, and we adjust for the frontage around, around the building itself.
Mayor, just if I could, that's a 14,000-square-foot building, just to give you reference in terms of the size of the property.
Okay.
Residential and nonprofit assessments, how we assess those. Apartments are commercial and pay at the normal rate. Non-apartment residential units, such as residential condos, are .001 times the downtown-wide budget, so in 2014, 15, that was $94.12 per unit. The thought is, is that the residents within the boundaries of the district do get, receive benefit from the clean and safe services of the bid. Nonprofits are assessed only on frontage, so if you have a nonprofit organization that owns its building, it has a zero assessed value, but they still pay the frontage rate into the bid. The only exception of type of property that is not assessed at all is churches. The churches in the bid are not assessed. We also have a bid advisory board, and the bid advisory board meets five to six times per year. They review and approve an annual budget and then forward it to the city council for their review, comment, and public hearing. The bid board is comprised of representatives from each of the character districts. Automobile Alley currently has three members, Bricktown has three members, the Central Business District Underground has four, Deep Deuce, Film Row, Park Plaza each have two. We do have residential representation, one downtown property owner plus the current president of the Urban Neighbors Organization, and Midtown would likely have two to three representatives that would be added to this board of directors. This is the map of what the downtown bid boundaries would look like with the inclusion of Midtown as we have drawn the current boundaries.
What is that northern street there?
13th. And we have a timeline, because we have a process for getting this done. On April 2nd and 8th, we hold public meetings to talk about the bid, to let the property, invited all the property owners to tell them, you know, kind of what we were doing, where we were headed. On May 29th, we mailed out all the remaining petitions to property owners. On June 5th, we completed our petition drive, and today, the council is receiving those petitions. July 15th is the scheduled date for the bid board to approve the overall budget. August 19th will be the bid board meeting if we miss our July 15th date of approving the budget. September 1st, the city council will set public hearing for year six of the bid. You will hold a public hearing and reauthorize the bid for year six, and the Treasury will then in October will send out the bid, the bills for the bid. I say this because I think it's important to know that there is a process here for this. This is actually the process that we will follow anyway for the downtown bid. This year, we, if you accept these petitions, we will follow this process, including the Midtown as part of the budgeting process. And I think that in closing, I'd like to mention that we have had some more petitions that have come into our office since the number that you have. So we have received three additional petitions for .91%, bringing our new total of support to 63.52%. We have really made every effort to keep this process as transparent and inclusive as possible. For the first time in the history of the downtown bid, we mailed all the remaining petitions that we did not get signed through meetings or through door-to-door. We asked city councils specifically to prepare an official council item for the agenda today so we would have an opportunity to present to you and show you this support. And I also wanted to mention that two of the highest assessments in this particular area of the bid, one will be Midtown Renaissance Rico. Their assessment annually currently will be $51,730, and that assessment is likely to increase in the very near future, as some of their properties have not yet come online on the assessment rolls with improvements, such as Fassler Hall.
Yeah, are they in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay. What about St. Anthony's?
St. Anthony is also in favor of it. Their petition, we have signed petitions from St. Anthony. Their petitions, their assessments will total $49,615. Part of St. Anthony's campus is, has an assessed value, some of it doesn't. We have all of the petitions for the privately-owned part of St. Anthony, with the exception of Bone &amp; Joint. They are in favor of it, but it is a complicated ownership, and it is going through the process right now.
If Bone &amp; Joint's office buildings, Joint, Metro, and Board members of that are in favor, whether the people who are out of town have not been able to come back to sign petitions, but St. Anthony is very much in favor of it.
I'd also like to mention that currently, the OCU Law School is also a privately-held building with an assessed value. It's currently in the bid, and they have also signed petitions for the Midtown bid because of the parking lots that they own that are in the, in the area of the new, of the proposed new bid.
Okay. Any questions for Jane? As you would guess, this is not unanimous, and we're going to hear from a couple of people who have asked to speak today.
In about three years, you'll have a streetcar line that runs through these areas. Have you looked, and if other cities are a guide, the property values along that route will increase in value. Have you looked at practices in other cities through a bid or any other vehicle as to assessments along streetcar lines or...
We, yes, the answer to that is yes. We have not come to any conclusion yet, I guess would be the right answer. But certainly discussions of a, a bit, a streetcar-adjacent improvement district or additional assessment to help support the streetcar has been discussed, but has not gone much further than discussion.
Great. Fantastic. Thanks.
Any other questions for Jane? All right, Jane, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Anita Sanders.
Good morning.
Anita, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Anita Sanders, and I own property at 830 Northwest 10th Street. As I tell my clients, because I'm an attorney, is at Francis and Northwest 10th. I'm also here on behalf of Susan Manchester, who owns property. She is on the northeast corner of the Roundabout at Charntel and 10th, more specifically, 1100 North Charntel, and also Ken Spears, who owns property at 210 Northwest 10th. We are all attorneys that were in the Midtown area way before it's become so popular and maybe a cool place to go to eat or for arts or for the district that has trucks that you can eat from. We take care of our own property. Our clients come to us from different parts of the state and different parts of the city. We could, we are an asset because they go to this area to eat, but we believe it's just another tax and an assessment or a penalty on us who provide a service. The memorandum that we got from Mr. James Couch, I found it to be a little misleading because, start with the location of the Midtown area. It said that it only went to another location. It said, "North 13th Street, Broadway Place on the east, and Northwest 8th on the south, and North Charntel Avenue on the west." I am not included in that particular description, but I did receive the assessment in which I was included to pay $975. In the second paragraph, it said that the memorandum, that there was a disclosure of, from the Oklahoma City Inc. that had been working with the property in Midtown. No one has contacted me. I've received no notice, except for the memorandum that I should pay $975. We believe that it's compared to a homeowner's due or a punishment to us or a penalty to be in that area. We will not benefit, we believe, from this downtown business improvement district. There was no notice of any public hearings. I check my mail daily. I have it documented on a sheet, and I received no notice. The, and Ms. Manchester asked me to tell you that the bid is designed and proposed to attract customers for retail and for residential purposes and not for professional purposes. There is no formula in which would operate for people who give service, retail, or residential rental. It's an increase for us in issues of parking and trespassing. We feel like that we're going to have to put up gates or security cameras and hire security guards because of the additional parking. We would ask you if you would give us more time and more discussion can be made of the problems and concerns that we may have and not take a vote. problems and concerns that we may have and not take a vote on this today. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Anita. Kelly Work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Kelly Work, and my address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. I'm here representing the owners of the Charter Commons Office Development and also the owners of the Goldman Law Building. Charter Commons, as most of you are aware, is located, it occupies the entire city block between Northwest 12th and 13th and Hudson and Harvey. So it's along the northern edge of the proposed area of annexation. The Goldman Law Building is located at the southeast corner of Northwest 13th and Harvey. I'd like to request, if I could, that the annexation area map be put up, and I can, I think that will be helpful. As I understand, the item that is on your agenda today, do you have the one that just shows the Midtown? It is that you all are considering annexing what is shown on this exhibit into the downtown business improvement district. So what's being referred to as Midtown area is proposed to be annexed. You can see there where the two properties that I represent are located there on, between 12th and 13th, on both sides of Harvey, and the Charter Commons runs over to Hudson. We did file our formal written objection to the annexation, which you all should have. We, both the Charter Commons Office Development and the Goldman Law Building are primarily owner-occupied buildings. The Charter Commons is partly office condos and with some individually-owned building. They're occupied by professional services. They are Class A buildings that are fully occupied and well-maintained. The Charter Commons owners have their own assessments. They hire and have a full-time caretaker that looks after those, their properties. And of course, particularly with the Charter Commons, it has been established there for a long time and has sidewalks and mature trees and landscaping, and all of the maintenance for that is provided by the owners of the buildings there with a full-time caretaker. The Goldman Law Building at 13th and Harvey, they also are owner-occupied with some additional professional service tenants, and they contract for their own maintenance. In our view, the annexation of these properties at the northern fringe of the proposed annexation area will provide no benefit to us as owners and will only increase our cost of operation. The way this particular bid has been designed, it seems to be primarily oriented towards marketing for the retail and commercial and residential uses that are located in this area. It's interesting to note that the Midtown Association, that I understand is one of the proponents of the bid, lists dozens of businesses and retail establishments on their website, but they have none of the professional services that are within the Charter Commons and within the Goldman Law Building listed on their website. So the bid, in our view, is primarily designed to serve those retail and residential uses and will not provide benefit for us. And for that reason, we ask that we be, that the boundary be drawn excluding both the Charter Commons property and the Goldman Law Building. The proposed bid, as it's presently proposed, provides no difference in the assessment rate based on whether the properties are professional offices or retail or commercial or residential properties. And a significant portion of the proposed assessment, as we understand, will be devoted to marketing purposes. And just by way of example, the petitions that were provided to the owners of property within this annexation area included what the estimated first-year assessment would be, and with the breakdown of how the funds would be used. And I have just one example. This is for one of the buildings at 304 Northwest 13th Street within the Charter Commons area. And so the estimate for the first year total is $1,383.40, the first year's assessment. Now, of that total, the amount that is proposed to be devoted to marketing is $497.73, or 36%. So in our view, we will not receive any benefit from marketing of the Midtown businesses that is to be done with the significant portion of these funds that will result from the assessed amounts. The, one of the, I think it's interesting to note, and I just would bring your attention, that, I mean, some determination is being made as to individual properties, as to whether they will be considered included or not within this annexation area. And for example, I would just draw your attention to the properties along Broadway there between what is Broadway Circle and 13th Street. So those properties along the west side of Broadway are not proposed to be included in the annexation. So those businesses will be not subject to this assessment that is proposed to be done. And we have no problem with them being left out. We just would like to have the same consideration. We would like to be left out of the proposed bid as well, and that line can easily be drawn to the south of our proposed properties fronting on Northwest 13th Street. This proposed annexation and the assessments that would result, we believe is not going to provide any benefit for the owners of these professional office buildings that care for and maintain their properties with respect to Charter Commons in particular through their own assessments. So for that reason, we would ask that you exclude the Charter Commons property and the Goldman Law Building property from the proposed annexation area. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What are those businesses on the west side of Broadway? What is?
That would include the car dealerships, the Jaguar-Volvo dealership, the Mercedes-Benz dealership, and I guess there may be others included in there. But they front along Broadway between Broadway Place and 13th Street.
Kelly, thanks.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'd like to address that specific issue. Those properties that, if you could go to the slide that shows all of downtown Oklahoma City? Slide, yeah, right there. Thank you. If you will look at the green there, all of those properties that Kelly mentioned are actually in Automobile Alley, not in Midtown, because they front on Broadway. And that's why they were not included in the Midtown bid, because they're part of the Automobile Alley district. And they're not currently in the bid because we are waiting for the current development on the east side of Broadway with the Oklahoma Contemporary and some other things happening there, but they are scheduled to be included in the bid in the next generation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond briefly. I have not had time to individually research that issue, but I've been advised that those properties along Broadway, north of Broadway Place to 13th Street are actually not part of Automobile Alley. And just looking at that map, it looks like the boundary is, in fact, at the alley just north of 10th Street rather than 13th Street for Automobile Alley. I could be wrong.
That's for the business district, not the district itself.
Yeah, there are two distinctions within that, Kelly. The assessment area in some of these districts are slightly different than the actual boundaries of the designated district, which is the confusion here.
Meg, you want to speak to the wisdom of bringing Midtown into the Business Improvement District?
Certainly.
I'd be happy to. And Kelly, thank you for your presentation. I thought it was really well done. Anita, thank you for coming down. I appreciate it as well. You know, just for those that don't know me, as a private citizen, I was one of the group that actually put together the original bid more than 15 years ago, I think. We're in the fifth year of the second 10-year generation of Business Improvement Districts. And, you know, we did so with the advice and guidance of a consultant, several consultants, in fact, that came in to talk about how downtowns manage themselves, grow, and prosper. And I think without any question, in the 15 years, we've seen an incredible expansion and growth in downtown, and we have seen, I have personally seen, professional management that has really made the difference, and that's a lot of what the Business Improvement District provides for us. On a light side, I was also the tree lady that provided the maintenance on the tree beds before we had street-level maintenance on Automobile Alley, and I personally was incredibly happy that we actually were able to hire somebody to do that rather than have me sitting on the sidewalks on Saturday mornings pulling weeds. We have seen property values increase in every one of these districts dramatically, and I think the Business Improvement District has largely been responsible for that. I want to address a couple of things, Kelly, that you talked, or Anita, that you talked about as well in terms of not providing, not receiving any benefit from the marketing. This is a new addition to the bid, and I have a professional business. My business is marketed by the bid, and I certainly imagine that you all would be included in any marketing material and any websites and any kind of promotions that the Midtown group would be doing. In terms of the individual maintenance that's being provided, the bid doesn't provide any maintenance on private property. So, you know, any maintenance that you do to maintain your own property would need to continue, and what the bid provides is maintenance for public property, streets, street sweeping, and those kinds of landscaping things that are done in the public right-of-way, not on your private property. And so there is a distinction there between the services that would be provided. Kind of from a big picture, you know, we can do so much more collectively than we can do individually. And, you know, what we have seen in each district is that these types of services, hosting events, putting on festivals, are typically done by one or two large property owners that carry the burden of development of an entire district. And Midtown is a perfect example of one that has been largely supported by St. Anthony Hospital. I don't think we would have Midtown today as a district if St. Anthony Hospital hadn't decided to stay and build their campus there, if they hadn't taken the initiative to tear down, purchase and then tear down a lot of vacant and abandoned buildings. Layer on top of that, the investment that the Midtown Renaissance Group has made, and it has created a neighborhood, but it's largely been supported by these two groups. And as districts mature, it seems like the right time to bring in the property owners and to share the opportunity to invest in their neighborhoods amongst all the property owners. And that's certainly what we've seen happen in the other districts. I was happy to see that, I think the required threshold for petitions is 60% to create a bid. We've got almost 64% approval with some bids still outstanding, and I certainly believe it's time that Midtown participate as part of that fabric of overall downtown and be part of the bid.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council?
The only other question I had, it's to Mr. Jordan, since I'm new as to an annexation like this. This is done pursuant to statute, and that's Title 11, correct?
Correct.
And they issued petitions pursuant to Title 11?
Yes.
And those petitions complied with the law?
Yes.
And we aren't required, as you said, a supermajority. We exceed 60%, so these petitions are in compliance with the law as best we know.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? How about a motion then on Item 9N?
I would move approval that we bring Midtown into the Downtown Business Improvement District.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all. You're welcome to step to the mic.
Thank you, council, for your votes. For the folks that are here and spoke today, I would just like to remind you of the process that this will be brought back. The bid budget will be part of the public hearing that we will have on the bid budget that will include Midtown. So there are other opportunities to talk and tweak and move forward with this. And so pursuant to, I'm sorry.
Anita Sanders.
Anita's comment about more time. We certainly have time to talk and swage and bring some other things back.
Jane, I also would ask that maybe you guys convene a meeting?
We will.
With the professional office?
We will. We've talked, Charter Commons was well-represented at our public meetings about the bid, and so, but we will continue this conversation.
Well, please take some extra time just to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to provide the input that we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're on to Item 9O of the council agenda. Understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
All right. All right. No, we need a motion to pass the resolution. Sorry. Okay. Cast your votes. 9O passes unanimously. 9P, understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Okay. Cast your votes. 9P passes unanimously. 9Q, we do not need executive session on 9Q?
Strike it.
Sure, see, yeah. This time, a motion to strike would be in order. And a second. Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 9R, a motion to strike would be in order?
To strike.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9S, as claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on either of the items listed under 9S? All right, how about a motion?
[inaudible].
All right. Is there a second on 9S?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10, as claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under Item 10? All right, how about a motion?
Motion to break.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Which brings us to items from council. James, do you have anything?
I have two things. I thought it was very significant that OG&E announced that they were going to commence construction of a two-and-a-half-megawatt solar power plant this week. It's going to be in a couple of different facilities, including Northwest 10th and Ward 3. It's about seven-and-a-half million dollars. It's 10,000 panels, enough to power 500 homes in Oklahoma City, with a request for information for something 25 times bigger than that, 50 megawatts. That'd be 250,000 panels. I mean, that's really, really substantial. And I think very forward-thinking on the part of OG&E, a lot of utility companies across the country are resisting and fighting to see this movement, I think is very, very significant. Didn't get a lot of interest, but I think it's a significant announcement. And I think the application for us, you know, a lot of people believe that solar will take off in the next couple of years, not necessarily for an interest in saving the planet, but because of economics. A lot of people think 2017 is the watershed year where solar will continue to drop in price and natural gas will have a hard time competing with solar. The interest for us is that we have very concentrated entities that use an enormous amount of electricity, and that's almost always pumps that are pumping water through our pipes, and they take about a million dollars of electricity a year. We have about five of those. So now that we know that OG&E is interested in building concentrated solar power plants, there may be the opportunity for a partnership, or at least to start the conversation. Maybe you don't do it now. Maybe you wait till 2017, 2018, but begin to have the conversation with them about how we may partner together to both save money, because it seems like the pumps that are pumping water through our pipes would be ideal for that kind of application, because it's so much electricity used in a small area, and we have plenty of land around it. it to do it. That's one thing. The second thing, about three weeks ago, I went to the Economic Development Trust, and I just inquired about our TIF districts. There's some kind of discussion about how they, there's an offset for I-89 when you created a TIF district, and how maybe some of that money that's diverted gets offset. But nobody really seems to be able to explain it or point to where it was. So I went to the Economic Development Trust three weeks ago and asked if somebody could explain that. I was referred to Wiley Williams in the municipal council's office, who then told me that he doesn't really understand it and wouldn't, he'd have to ask Dan Bachelor, who's out of the country for three weeks. Long and short of it is, I'm not sure that there's anyone of our 4,300 employees that does understand that or knows where to point to, to show me where it is, or knows that it's being monitored. And I also don't think anyone in I-89 understands it, or I think the same applies. If I'm wrong, did somebody call me and tell me, where do I find this offset or that somebody's monitoring it? I just want to learn. I think it has important implications for policymaking. I'm not sure that we can make policy on TIF districts without totally understanding that. So if somebody can just point me in the right direction, I'd be grateful. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Had the opportunity along with John to attend the National League of Cities meetings in Salt Lake City and spent some time wandering around downtown and came up with some interesting perspectives on bike lanes, public transit, and the width of streets in downtown, and also on the homeless situation. And then I'd like to thank the retired firefighters for their hospitality Saturday at their picnic, for my wife and I always enjoy getting together with them and talking about issues that impact our retired folks. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Pete?
Just a comment. Yesterday, I've gotten a lot of comments from people that live on private roads, and some people that live on sectioned line roads, that their roads are completely washed out out in my, close to where I live. So I decided on my way home, I'd go look at that dam that broke. And after about 30 minutes of trying to get there, I gave up and went home because the roads, I couldn't find a way to get there without going clear back to town virtually and starting over. There are so many roads out. I mean, it's, we are facing a major disaster in, I'm sure it's all over the city. I'm not trying to isolate it to where I am. But if it is like it is where in the area that I live in, that is the rural areas and also along the Lightning Creek area, we're, we have, this is a major catastrophe. And I really think that we need to really look at what our long-term plan's going to be going forward. If it is a result of climate change, then this may be something that we might have to anticipate. The numbers, the standards that we've used in the past to determine how wide a street is or how deep a hole's supposed to be, maybe we need to relook at those. Because certainly, some of the people, especially the people in the Lightning Creek area, have been flooded so many times in the past 10 years, that the numbers about 100-year floods and 500-year floods render themselves a little bit meaningless when you're still getting water in your house after. I've had people tell me that they've had water in the house as many as six times in the last 10 years. Now, if we're building stuff to 100-year standard, and I don't mean to say that I'm the only one that's got this problem, I know that all of you, surely all of you are getting phone calls or seeing the damage yourselves. But I think we really, over the next few months, we've got to take another look at what we've done in the past, reevaluate it, and go forward. I don't doubt that we've built things based on what the standard says is 100-year flood. I'm starting to doubt whether that standard is accurate or not, when I've seen it in people's houses as often as we have recently. So I just would like to see perhaps an interim study over the, that's a term I got from the legislature.
Yeah, we're obviously not the only city out there dealing with, you know, these types of extreme weather events. I'd like to know if other cities are looking at the issue, or bringing up the 100-year issue, the 500-year issue. We're not the only ones. So let's find out if others want to change their standards.
I just have a couple of areas that have been flooded so often that perhaps we can't do it until the 2017 bond issue, but we've got to do something about people that are flooded. I mean, I can take you to a particular location that is immediately south of where we're building the new wellness center on the campus of Cap Hill High School. And there's a, that goes through a park that the city owns, that the water, every time we have a big rain, people get water in their houses.
Well, you can remember the June of 2010 in far northwest Oklahoma City. I don't know if you all remember that rain. It had like a foot of rain in like, I don't know, just a handful of hours.
Right.
Massive flooding.
Right.
And then in, two years ago, of course, we had the May 31st event where, you know, people were actually killed when they, you know, tried to take cover and got caught up in the floodwaters. And here we are, two years after that. Now, it's a big city, and it's, you know, it's not all the same neighborhood each time. But those are, those are three, like, once-in-a-lifetime events that we've had in, you know, five years.
So Councilman White's point is that maybe we're having these at a higher frequency, and that needs to be evaluated.
Right.
So let us go back and look at what other cities are doing.
You know, I'm, I've become convinced that some of the standards that we use can't possibly be accurate. Because I'm not talking about a flood where you get seven inches of rain on one house. I'm talking about a flood that happens five, six times in a 10-year period. And none of, and maybe three of those were big deals, but the other five were just a lot of rain. I mean, I see, I can take you to a place where I have seen debris against the cyclone fence for 10 years. And it's not the same debris. They clean it up, and then a month or a year or later, they get more debris in it. Houses, we just have to figure out some better system. We have to, we may have to buy the houses. We may have, we have, but we've got to do something. We just can't keep laying it off on catastrophic storms.
Yeah. And, you know, perhaps we do need more resources in this area, because that's a massive assignment when you're talking 620 square miles and make sure that, you know, water stays below the curves. I mean, that's just, that's just not a realistic expectation.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's not a massive assignment to figure out the number of houses that have been flooded more than three times in the last five years, or more than eight times in the last 10 years, and fix those things.
Yeah.
If nothing else, we'd buy the house.
And we've asked for the last storms to make sure that if people have any water, they've reported to us. We'll get a good database to work off of. I think we also have to check with the Corps of Engineers and see what they're doing nationally on that. But Eric, can you give us a quick update on the road washouts that we've got? I think the worst part of them are in southeastern Oklahoma City, but if you could give us an update as to...
They are, Councilman White. We still have six washouts that have not been completed. I believe five of the six are in Ward 4. One of the challenges that we have is that we work very closely with FEMA. And FEMA, as they do receive, or we get money from them, ask that they go visit those project sites before we do the work. And they've been in week, this and last week, been visiting Oklahoma City and going to each of those. We actually had some site visits on Monday of this week. But we're waiting for those federal funds to come available for us to do that work. We found in the past, if we hurry and do that work too soon, sometimes those projects aren't approved. And so there's a little bit of due diligence here that we're doing with federal government. If we're not approved, though, we're committed to get those fixed as quickly as we can. And the washouts are typically the areas that are tin-horns, that overtopped, and then just basically took out the complete road. But yeah, there's several in your ward. I think the other one is actually in McAtees Ward and Ward 3. So we're down to six. You know, I would be happy to report that we have all of our signals restored. We have all of our power restored. We've been able to clean a lot of the inlets. We've not seen significant flooding since the May 6th initial event, although we've seen a lot of high water. But you're also correct. You know, we are monitoring the city very closely, and as the residents call, we're putting them into our mapping system, our GIS mapping system. We're taking photos and data. We're also starting some new studies for drainage improvement projects. We have one that's underway now in downtown. We have one that's in Chisholm Creek. We have others that are planned. But you're right. We are looking to re-study the city and look at some new standards, possibly for future design.
Eric, can you, you've told this to me multiple times, but I can't remember. How do you determine what's a 100 and 1 in 500-year flood, when obviously we don't have data for that many years?
There are some factors and criteria that are provided to us, either through severe storms or through some of the technical data. So it depends on the frequency of the event. Historically, what we can do is we can pull data on what the annual rainfall is for every year. And one of the items that we're pulling together for the city manager is a historical perspective of what all of those storms look like, say, over the last 70 or 80 years. But the better data that we have now, and with the forecasting and some of the Mezzanet data, where they can actually plot exactly where the rainfall's incurring in Oklahoma City, we can tell you that on May 6th, in Ward 4, we actually experienced eight, about eight inches of rain in a two-and-a-half-hour period that equated to the 500-year event right on Santa Fe between southwest 29th and southwest 44th on Lightning Creek.
Councilman Shidib, really, it's a statistical analysis. And so you take the data that you have, and as time goes on, you have more data to put into it. But you take the data that you have on annual rainfall, not annual rainfall events, but specific storm occurrences, and then that's plotted out and done a statistical analysis and come up with a statistical 100-year storm and a statistical 500-year storm.
And then we can extrapolate that data, whether it occurred in a two-hour period, a four-hour period, a six-hour period, 12 or 24. So the amount of rainfall over those different time periods...
And the time period is critical. A six-hour storm over 24 hours is different than a six-hour storm over a four-hour period.
Don't misunderstand. I don't want you to misunderstand more than anybody. This is not a criticism. I'm not criticizing. I'm saying that, given what I've seen, it's time to look at it again. I just, I believe the analysis you made were probably wonderful. They're probably right on from an engineering standpoint. But we really don't, we don't have, we don't have the statistics to really know what a 500-year flood is. I mean, we can use all these analyses, and we, but we don't know. We don't have 500 years' worth of data to know that. So I'm not, it's not a criticism. It's just, you know, in fact, there may be some opportunities involved in it. Some of these houses that we ought to buy shouldn't have been built in that location in the first place. Or we shouldn't, we should have bought them when we, when we decided, the old Cap Hill Golf Course, for example, we're going to build houses on that. We should have built all those houses, because there used to be a creek that ran through there.
When was that? When was that?
When was that? The Cap Hill Golf Course? Oh, it was there, I caddied there in the, in about 1950, so it was there then. But what we did, we built, we built, at that time, we built some of the nicest homes in Oklahoma City. On that golf course. The county sheriff lived there, the city councilman lived there, the state senator lived there, the House of Representatives lived all in one neighborhood. The police chief, the fire chief, they all lived within a block of each other. The Speaker of the House lived there. And, but what we, that was great. That was all wonderful for South Oklahoma City, except they didn't figure out what they were going to do with the water that came off of it. There was a creek. I used to get in trouble for going down there and finding golf balls. But, so there was a creek right through the middle of it. And when that creek was covered up, then that's the water, now more impervious than it was when it had all the thing to block the water with the cups and the greens. Now it's covered with houses and streets, and the water just runs right through those people's houses. That's where you'll find a number of floodings over time. That's just one location. There were some mistakes made, I think, in the design of the tunnel or the canal that we concreted on Lightning Creek. I think it probably could have been done better, looking at, with the luxury of 40 years of hindsight. But...
All right.
I just, I just think we need, it needs to be a big priority for the 2017 bond issue.
Okay. Meg?
Quickly, Mayor. I just want to congratulate the Class N 10 Pen Neighborhood. They had a wonderful festival on Saturday. And despite the rain, 300 or 400 people came out to enjoy the activities, food trucks, bouncy castles, all sorts of things. The team did a great job. Dead Center, if anybody was downtown over the weekend, there were people watching movies all over town. It was incredibly fun, celebrating 15 years, movies to, you know, for families. It just was a great event. And I want to remind everybody that the fabulous Faberge exhibit opens at the Oklahoma City Art Museum, starting on Friday, to the public. This is brought to us by the Museum, Virginia Museum of Art, I think it's called. And it's over 100 pieces of spectacular work that was created by the House of Faberge for the Russian czars. Really unique for us to see. Most people are familiar with the Faberge eggs, but this is everything from umbrella handles to just fabulous pieces of work. It's something really unique to Oklahoma City. And it'll be here for about three months, so I hope everybody will come see it.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out and thank those who live within the Millwood Public School District. A few weeks ago, Millwood passed their bond issue by 86 percent of the vote, again, by 86 percent of the vote, and then on last Tuesday, by 96 percent of the vote. The voters agreed for Millwood to de-annex from Francis Toto. And there is another vote coming up in a couple of months for those who live within Millwood District to annex into Metro Tech School District. For those who don't know, there's about a 20- to 30-minute drive from Millwood Public Schools to Francis Toto. Each year, there's a total of $625,000 that's going to support Francis Toto. And Millwood believes that the $625,000 needed to go towards Metro Tech, since Metro Tech is on the same street as Millwood and just maybe five minutes away. And students will have a better opportunity, more students will have a better opportunity to take classes at Metro Tech. So again, I just want to take time out to thank those who went and exercised their right to vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mark?
Just briefly, I wanted to thank city staff. They keep providing me with great tools to help me learn my job. I still have a lot to learn, but they have done a great job, and I wanted to thank them for that. One thing that jumped out at me that they sent me this week was the Remote Transaction Parity Act of 2015, which is legislation, federal legislation intended to help local businesses dealing with online sales tax loopholes. I don't know a lot about it. It used to be called the E-Fairness Bill. I was just wondering if we've looked at that and seen the impact that it has on local businesses in Oklahoma City, and if we have a policy as to that.
Yeah. No, we're very much in support of it and are trying to get our congressional representatives to see the wisdom of pushing that forward.
Right. Thank you.
It's costing us about 10 to 15 million a year, we estimate, to our general fund.
Thank you.
All right. City manager reports.
At the morning, we have a presentation from the, regarding IMSA medical outcomes. Dr. Giddelo is here this morning.
Good morning. It's always a privilege to be with you. And at the risk of sounding like I'm correcting something right from the start, I just want to point out, this is not a discussion about IMSA medical outcomes. This is a discussion about medical outcomes for our citizens that our EMS system takes care of. And that is not limited to IMSA, right? And so you are very busy about the work of city governance on a week-in, week-out basis. And I'm very busy about trying to be the clinical conscience for our EMS system and look over the care that over 200,000 patients are getting yearly. And so it does help when we get together. It helps me, and I hope it helps you, and I hope it helps the citizens that are listening to our discussion this morning. Just as a point of clarification, I am not an IMSA employee. My paycheck does not come from IMSA. I am equally the medical director for the Oklahoma City Fire Department and 22 other fire departments that comprise our EMS system that serves metropolitan Oklahoma City and Tulsa. So that becomes very important, because any time that I have the privilege to talk about the state of our EMS system, and it most typically gives me the ability to share good outcomes and good news, I want this council and I want the citizens to have confidence that my mission here is simply to speak the truth, and that is it. So with that, I wanted to come at the request of the city manager's office and talk about the response times in our system, the expectations that our EMS system has specifically to the ambulance response time component, the impacts that that may or may not be having on the fire departments that comprise our EMS system, and just a little bit about the clinical goals and impacts of those response times, and particularly, any changes that we have seen since November 1st, 2013. and particularly any changes that we have seen since November 1st, 2013, in which you will recall, there were some changes in the ambulance-based response times. So this gives a little pause to talk about, again, what is our big mission here? And the best way that I have found to describe this to a citizen that says, well, I don't know, what's EMS all about? I get hurt, I feel sick, I think I'm having a heart attack, I call 911, you guys come, and that's kind of it, isn't it? It's, it's more than that. It certainly includes that. But we are very much a system of now almost 4,200 dispatchers, EMTs, advanced EMTs, paramedics, firefighters. We often get assists from our law enforcement colleagues that are able to increasingly provide some hemorrhage control or CPR or whatever, advanced first aid, if you will, that could be required if they're on scene. So this is a very large coordinated system, and we are very much passionate about what we term a relentless pursuit of optimal out-of-hospital emergency medical care capabilities. This is very much a medical practice. Many people don't think about it. They think about EMS as something that gets them to a doctor at a hospital, so then they can get medical care. This is a medical practice. Maybe with some acknowledgement to the Oklahoma City County Health Department, this may or may not be the largest medical practice in Oklahoma City, but it absolutely is the largest practice of acute unscheduled medical care needs. And I'm very privileged to be the medical director. Beyond our continued quest for quality of care and capability of care, and I hope many of you got a chance to see, there were very nice news media pieces just this last week on our latest attack on sudden cardiac arrest. We're going to be using a whole new form of CPR just in the next few weeks, and we think it will continue to make real difference in outcomes in a city that is already known around the country and internationally for being one of the safest cities in the entire North American continent to have a sudden cardiac arrest. We're not comfortable resting on that laurel. We want to continue to advance success in cardiac arrest and other time-sensitive illness outcomes. So that being said, we also have concomitant duties to deliver that care with the utmost of safety. Not just safety to patients, but safety to the public. And one of the hallmarks of our system is that while Oklahoma City is blessed with many wonderful physicians and nurses and other allied medical specialists, almost all of them require the patient to come to them for care. By nature of our system, we bring care to the patient. But that also means that we encounter a lot of people along the way from where our resources are coming to where that patient is at. And we have to be very careful about how we operate in this EMS system so that in the commission of help, that we do not also commit harm to the traveling public between where we're coming from, where the patient is at. That is easier said than done. And also, we owe the same amount of safety regard and support to these 4,200 EMS professionals that comprise our system. If we're going to ask someone to get in a fire engine, or an ambulance, or other emergency vehicle and operate that with red lights and sirens, make no mistake, we are asking them to accept some risk to their health and welfare in the process of helping others. And I'm very proud of these people that willingly do that, but we should never ask that lightly. And that has a real impact on how we prioritize calls for service and how we no longer operate with as many light and siren responses as we once did. I'm going to talk about the clinical impact of that. And then finally, as I've been listening to the work of the council here this morning, and as I appreciate it, and I appreciate your work week in and week out, the reality is, no matter how noble the mission, there is always some fiscal realities to what we can and cannot do to meet the expectations of our public and at the same time, meet the fiscal expectations of our public. So money doesn't always come first. I think we think that, rightfully so, that life has extreme value, but at the same time, there is some limit on what we should or should not do from a fiscal standpoint. So those are the big missions and responsibilities in which response times and how we look at those and the clinical impacts, it's kind of the big picture. So if I get the next slide. Now, there's no question that most of the country has some concept of where our EMS system is. But if I get the next slide, not only does most of that country, but most of our own citizens don't realize how busy this EMS system is. So you, you not only have a wonderful EMS system that serves Oklahoma City, it also happens to be one of the largest 20 in the entire United States. And so when we do something here, not only do a lot of people regionally pay attention to what we're doing and why we're doing it, and then in turn consider if that is a good fit for their EMS system, we have people all over the country and internationally that now index to our clinical and operational standards. And so for the last calendar year, you can see in metropolitan Oklahoma City and Tulsa, certainly Oklahoma City being the largest population piece of this, we ran almost 200,000 calls, and we transport about three out of four patients that we, we encounter. We serve a lot of folks, and we're very, very honored to do so. Next slide, please. So let's talk about quality of an EMS system, and is it more than just getting there fast? I think, and this becomes very important to me as well. I very much welcome your comments. I very much welcome your questions, because if you were to ask any of our EMTs and medics, I hope they would easily recognize what I'm about to tell you, and that is, I really don't like talking to people. I very much enjoy talking with people, because I think we all come out of those conversations better off for it. And so that being said, you know, is it just getting there fast? In 28 years in emergency medical services now, majority of those being a physician medical director, I would like to be able to tell you, I've had numerous patients tell me, I really appreciate the EMTs and paramedics. They got the medication dosage just right. They accurately interpreted my heart rhythm. They managed my airway and gave me oxygen perfectly. And the reality is, I'm not sure I can count compliments on even one finger such as those. What I always hear is, they got there fast, and they were nice. Or sometimes they change it up and they say, they were really nice, and oh, by the way, they got there fast. So fast and nice, nice and fast. The reality is, an EMS system is actually far more than that. And I think we have to be careful that we don't fall into the trap of saying, well, how's our EMS system? Well, we're getting there fast, and people are nice and good enough. And so one of the things that I wanted to share with you, and I'll be happy to forward this document to you if you want to read it in its entirety. In 2007, I was privileged to be part of a writing group from the U.S. Metropolitan Municipalities EMS Medical Directors Consortium. And we wrote a piece called Evidence-Based Performance Measures for EMS Systems: A Model for Expanded EMS Benchmarking. And that received proper peer review and was published in Pre-Hospital Emergency Care, which is the most widely regarded and renowned journal for EMS medicine in the world. And so I'm not going to read the whole article to you, but I just, I want to read a few sentences because I think this writing group captured it best. And so it talks about traditional performance measures and specifically response time intervals. And what this writing group said was that EMS system response time intervals are attractive quality measures as they are easily quantifiable, objective, and readily understood by both the public and policymakers. And so even though I was part of this writing group, I would actually take exception to that statement, because they should be easily quantifiable, they should be objective, and they should be readily understood. But if you ask the question in any major metropolitan area of comparison in the United States today, well, what are your response time standards? They probably can tell you a number, but then if you say, well, how do you actually measure them? That's where the objectivity becomes very different. Because many systems don't measure the response time until the response vehicle, the emergency apparatus, the fire engine or the ambulance, is physically in motion to the patient. And the end of that response time is when that same apparatus arrives, quote, "on scene." Well, part of my 28 years in EMS has been as a street EMT and medic. And sometimes your definition on scene differs a little bit. You're busy, you're trying to anticipate what's going to happen with this patient. You're already sort of, you know, 200 yards out of the vehicle before it even stops. And it is not uncommon in some systems for well-meaning and busy EMTs and paramedics to say, well, you know what? I can see the house. I can see the office building. It's within a block. Just go ahead and call us on scene. And that way, we don't have to worry about it when we actually get there. What I'm telling you is, in our system, because we have automatic vehicle locators, that kind of incidence is low to nonexistent. And most importantly, if you were to have an event today and call 911, when would that response time be applicable to you? That response time is from when you pick up the phone, not when a vehicle becomes in motion, right? And so that's how we measure response time in Oklahoma City. When that 911 call comes to the IMSA, American Medical Response Dispatch Desk, that's when the clock starts here, not when the vehicle is in motion. Now, that interval, we are trying to make as short as possible for obvious reasons. But the key being, we use the most stringent response time standard here in Oklahoma City and Metro Tulsa that you can find anywhere. So when we talk about the response time has changed from 8:59 to 10:59 to Priority 1 calls, we're not taking the best-case scenario of response time intervals. We're taking the most stringent, and I think that's important. So now, that being said, next slide. So where did, historically, the response time here was 8:59. Many systems are still at 8:59 for Priority 1 calls or high priority calls or life-threatening calls, whatever the vernacular is in a given metropolitan area or system. Whether it's 7:59 or 8:59, the reality is, almost all of that is indexed to one scientific study that was done in Seattle, Washington, and published in the Journal of the American Medical Association, also a very prestigious medical journal. But it was published in 1979. And so I think you would agree with me that state-of-the-art science in 1979 probably doesn't necessarily resemble state-of-the-art science in 2012, 13, 14, 15. And so what this paper said, and at the time, it was an extremely credible paper. Dr. Mickey Eisenberg is a colleague of mine. I've been privileged to get to know him over the last several years. He's still very active in EMS medical direction in King County, Washington, and certainly one of the areas that we benchmark in quality of cardiac arrest outcomes and EMS care. That has not changed. But what has changed fundamentally is the makeup of an EMS system and the capabilities of EMTs and paramedics in those systems, particularly EMTs. When this paper came out in 1979, what it basically said was, you had a better chance of survival if you had a heart attack and had a sudden cardiac collapse, if CPR could be started within four minutes, and if your heart was in a particular rhythm, ventricular fibrillation that could respond to an electrical shock by a paramedic, then, and, and that shock could occur in eight minutes, you had a better chance of survival. So CPR in four minutes, defibrillation in eight minutes. Okay, in 1979, we weren't training near as many people in layperson CPR. We did not have public access to fibrillation. And most importantly, we didn't have EMT access to fibrillation. So we didn't even put automated external defibrillators in the hands of EMTs. There is not a fire apparatus in Oklahoma City that has a frontline response apparatus for medical emergencies that does not have an automated external defibrillator. And every engine company in Oklahoma City that has a paramedic has a manual defibrillator. Every ambulance operated by IMSA has a manual defibrillator. But what I'm saying is that the standards have so fundamentally changed, and also what's very critical, is the CPR component. We have more and more citizens that are doing bystander CPR, and approximately two-thirds of the time that they do bystander CPR, not to take away from the action of the citizen, but that action is prompted by our emergency medical dispatcher through real-time phone instruction. So whether you've had prior training or not, you're going to get some on-the-job training in real time if somebody before you has collapsed. And that becomes very important. So that is in large part, one of the two reasons that we made a change, we recommended a change in the IMSA contract for services in 2013 to say, it was perfectly safe to extend the response times, because there was not any clinical detriment in doing so. The other reason that we knew that is there have been multiple papers written about what are the response times that make a difference, and they are not in the 7:59 versus 8:59 versus 9:00 versus 10:00 versus 11:00 or 12 range. To really see significant outcomes in difference, you have to get down to four minutes in response times. And we could do that in Oklahoma City. The price would be in millions of dollars. That is outside my expertise. And, you know, there are, there are folks in Oklahoma City, Fire Chief Steve Williamson, Jim Winham, executives at IMSA. They could help you put a price tag on that. It would be in the millions and millions of dollars. And that's not my decision whether that is money best spent or not. The reality is, for the response times that we are, that we have been operating in and that we are operating in, what I'm here to share with you today is, we are not seeing a clinical detriment, and I'm going to put some data behind that. So if I get the next slide. This is also a resource that I'm happy to provide you, should you be interested. And this is an evidence-based paper on system design that we were fortunate, IMSA commissioned us at the University of Oklahoma, Department of Emergency Medicine. And my colleague at the time, Dr. Stephen Thomas, and I, we went out and had the great ability, because of our friends in EMS around the country, to really call the best of the best and develop this paper. One of the most important chapters in there deals with response times, written by Dr. Thomas Blackwell, then in North Carolina at the time, in a very similar structured system to IMSA and the Oklahoma City Fire Department. And Dr. Blackwell has multiple papers that have helped to conclude what we're saying about what is or is not clinically impactful response time differences. And so that work is available for your reading if you choose as well. Next. So, a quick recap, right? Before November 1st, 2015, if you called 911 in Oklahoma City and you said, my wife is not breathing, and we accurately, as we would perceive that to be a life-threat call, that would be a Priority 1 call. And within the boundaries of Oklahoma City, the response time performance standard that the contractor was expected to meet at least 90% of the time by IMSA contract was 8 minutes and 59 seconds. Outside of Oklahoma City and Tulsa proper, in the suburbs, the response standard is 11:59. What has changed is after November 1st of 2013, so, you know, about a year and a half now, we've been operating with Priority 1 response time standards of 10:59. We've not changed beyond 11:59 outside the city. Priority 2 has had the biggest change in terms of absolute time differences from 12:59 to 24:59. But I want to remind the council, these are non-life-threat calls as best as we can determine by information provided from the caller. And this is not a freelance way of getting information from the caller. It is extremely regimented. When you call 911 in Oklahoma City today, you might think that there would be a dozen, 15, 20 ways we could code that call. We could say, well, it's a heart attack, or it's a drowning, or it's a car crash. The reality is, we have the capability through a proprietary dispatch system that is the most commonly used in the world to code your 911 call in almost 1,200 different categories. And we do that. And then we actually look at all 1,200 categories, and we see what the performance is in each and every one of those categories. and every one of those categories, and I'm going to give you an example of that this morning as well. So, these are the, these are the response time standards. Now, if I get the next slide, that's the standards, but what is the actual effect of those standards? And most critically, what is the effect of changing those standards? So, the IMSA Board of Trustees approved a contract that said, "Okay, we'll change priority one response times within Oklahoma City and Tulsa from 8:59 to 10:59 for priority one, 12:59 to 24:59 for priority two." Okay, that's the change, but what is the actual impact? And so this is the impact, okay? This is for metropolitan Oklahoma City, and I'm going to share with you metropolitan Tulsa, and you might say, "Well, I'm a city councilman in Oklahoma City, I don't care about what happens in Tulsa," but I just, I want to give you an index so that you see what is happening here is not just happening here in a vacuum, this is very much the same effect in both major metropolitan areas that we serve. So, all calls before November 1st, you see priority one was 11:56. Now, you know, you might say, "Well, wait a minute, I thought the, you know, I thought the response standard was 8:59." Okay, well, remember, this, this is the whole metropolitan area here, okay? And so if you look at, if you look at the change after November 1st of 2013, even though two minutes extra have been allotted, only one minute and 18 seconds is being taken up to 90% of the time. And so, you know, there are certainly calls that are essentially no change in time, calls that are 15, 20, 30 seconds change in time. But what I didn't want to do here is share averages with you, because I think you can appreciate from multiple other analyses that you do for different functions in the city, apart for EMS, when you average something, that can hide things. It can intentionally hide things, or it can unintentionally hide things. The bottom line is, it can still hide things. I like talking about fractiles because people have a better and clearer understanding. What we're saying is, 90% of the time, the difference is one minute and 18 seconds or less. And again, this is the ambulance component, not necessarily the EMS system component. Because remember, on these priority one calls, the Oklahoma City Fire Department is getting activated to respond. The priority two change, again, 12 minutes extra has been allotted, but at 90% of the time, only half of that is being taken. And that becomes very important because if you and I were the contractor to IMSA, we might be able to use some pretty sophisticated software, as they do, to have a better-than-average idea of where the next call might be in Oklahoma City, or where the next several calls might be in Oklahoma City, based on historical data. But even though we have the location relatively approximated, what you and I couldn't do is approximate whether that next call is going to be a priority one life-threat call or a priority two non-life-threat call, so you still have to staff the ambulances and position the ambulances as essentially every call is a priority one call. That becomes very important, and that's why you see less-than-anticipated impact in actual response times. So, now, that's metro Oklahoma City, next slide, if you will.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you go back to, can you talk just for a second about how many calls are being excluded?
Oh, yes.
Because that's obviously going to impact. When Chief Bryant tells us his response times, it's, doesn't matter what the weather is, doesn't matter what, what 1 in 500-year event, he says everything's there.
Right.
So tell us what we're looking at in terms of...
Great point, and I actually meant to cover it, so I'm glad that you asked. And so, when you look at these response time standards, there are exclusions for the contractor. Now, what those exclusions used to be is if you had hazardous weather. So there's precipitation on the streets, there's ice on the streets, there's snow on the street, there is something that would make operating an emergency vehicle apparatus using lights and sirens at its typical increased speed utilizing lights and sirens, it would almost certainly make that unsafe. And in such situations, rather than trying to inadvertently encourage the contractor to be unsafe for the sake of making these response time standards, because I agree with you, the Oklahoma City Fire Department reports everything without exclusions. They don't have a performance, and this is not a dig at the Fire Department at all, the simple fact is, they don't have a performance specified contractual obligation with financial penalty if they don't make that performance. So, American Medical Response now, previously Paramedics Plus when they were the contractor, if they don't make that 90% compliance, they pay real money to the authority. And when they haven't made that compliance, they have paid real money. So it's not just theory, it happens. And so if there is not a weather exclusion, then what we're encouraging inadvertently, but really, we're encouraging that contractor to operate without due regard to the safety of the public and the safety of its employees, which is part of our overall mission that we're responsible for. So, there are weather exclusions.
Like, can you, what exactly is the weather exclusion? I mean, it used to be that any amount of precipitation...
So, so I can't, now, as the medical director, okay, so remember, I'm not the one who writes the contractor contract, and so if Steve or Jim want to address that, I certainly would yield the mic to that exact question. But what I have seen is that it's not just, it's very humid and there's a few drops of mist in the air. I'm not sure we get a few drops of mist anywhere in Oklahoma City anymore, right? It's either dry, or it's a deluge. But that being said, the kind of precipitation that we're talking about is the kind of precipitation that you and I, we would be using our windshield wipers, we would be slowing down, we would not be operating at typical city-street speeds if we were being appropriately safe in our own private vehicles, let alone an emergency response vehicle.
Let me ask you a different way. Of the 200,000 calls, how many are being excluded in a year?
Well, so, so now, these gentlemen can give you that exact number. What I can tell you is that what is being excluded today is roughly 10% or less of what was being excluded in the old contract, okay? Here's why. The weather exclusion has not changed from prior to 2013 to after 2013. What has changed is the other exclusion that the contractor is allowed. And that is an unanticipated high system demand. And so if, if on a Tuesday, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the last 52-week rolling average would indicate that our system in metro Oklahoma City was handling 12 calls in that hour, okay? Then what happens if now, today, we're not faced with 12 calls, we're faced with 20? Is that something that, now, a contractor could build in for that, a contractor could say, "Well, we're going to build in for double what's ever happened before." Of course, we know what the impact of building that in would be, it would be at a much higher cost of operating the system. And if that's a cost that the citizens want to pay, then that's not my decision, that's ultimately, that's ultimately the citizen's decision through its elected leadership and through the Emergency Medical Services Board of Trustees, if you want to pay for that capacity that almost never gets used. Now, that being said, the old contract, it indexed system busyness to 90%. So if you were more than 90% busier than you historically had been in the last 52 weeks for that day of the week, for that hour of the day, then you got to exclude those calls if you didn't make the response time standard. And in fairness to the Emergency Medical Services Authority, when that contract was first written back in the day, that probably made sense. But as the system got busier and busier, and the expectations went up, it really became a mismatch. And I can tell you, because I work for the Medical Control Board, I'm obligated to tell you what they think, those physicians were decidedly not happy to see the number of exclusions the contractor was getting at times in the hundreds of calls a month. And so you would have these response time performance indicators, and you'd say, "Well, the contractor is, you know, they're, they're in compliance, they're at 92% compliance. Isn't it great?" But the reality is, when you're excluding hundreds of calls a month, I don't necessarily think that a typical citizen would say, "Well, but is that really 92% compliance?"
How about if you did this?
And so let me, let me finish, if you will, okay? And so what has drastically changed in this new contract is that the system busyness level has changed to above 90%. And, and so that one change, okay, so moving from 90% to 90...
Help me out, Steve, 93 or 98?
Okay, so Stephen talked about this change, but, but that one change has essentially taken away well over 50% of those exclusions, and where we had become concerned, looking at months of hundreds of exclusions, now what I can tell you is, a typical month might be 40 or 50 calls exclusion out of 12,000, and most of those are weather-related. So it may not sound like a big change, moving from 90% to 90-plus percent, somewhere between 90 and 100%, but it essentially obviated all of these system demand busyness exclusions. So what you're, what you're seeing today is when AMR says, "We are in 92% compliance" or 93%, that's actually a much better performance because the standard that they're against, even though you might say, "Well, it's easier because they have two minutes more to respond." The change in the exclusion wiped out any advantage of up to two minutes, and the reality is, as I'm showing you here, it's really not up to two minutes at 90%, it's basically a minute. So Steve, do you want to comment on...
Let me just ask this quickly while I'm thinking about, why, why not just report to us the average of all calls exactly as our Fire Department does?
We do.
And then you can keep these numbers for your contract?
We do.
Okay, and then, and then let us know, because if you have a broken leg and you call 911, you don't care that it's raining outside, you just care when somebody walks through the door. So it'd be interesting to compare apples to apples and know, just what is, I mean, it rained the entire month of May, it's probably going to rain the rest of this week.
Yeah, but we don't just rely on a little rain, we use a forensic company that goes in and analyzes by satellite and by actual fall how much weather is present. And anybody that has driven emergency vehicles at all will tell you about hydroplaning and issues like that. So those are known factors that the weather people use when they make the determination. So it's not just a few sprinkles, it's all determined by a third-party process to grant that exclusion. And as you recall, when you were on, on the board, you had concerns about this, this issue, and we reduced it by over 90%, and it's less than 2% now. It's predominantly when the forensic weather people say that the conditions are such that we're putting the public, the patient, or our employees in danger. And that is it. Now, every year when we come before this committee, council, we give you the response times without exclusions.
Okay.
So you see it both ways. Why it's important for us to maintain that is that contractually, there is large dollars taken out to guarantee that things are, there's checks and balances, that the proper care is rendered in an appropriate way, which includes safety. It's equally as important, it's an equally important drive to do it safely as it is for some people to view taking them out. Because 86% of our accidents are when lights and sirens are on, and that is equally distributed between that of employees driving and the public driving. So it's, it's a very, very complicated issue, but can be, can be monitored and maintained. We now presently have instituted that report we did for you when you were a trustee, and that's shown every month.
And what?
And it's shown every month, and it's on our website.
Okay. Did you change the contract? Because it seemed like the old contract was just any precipitation triggered.
Well, we couldn't convince you that it was just any precipitation, but it wasn't, but we, to verify that publicly, to be as transparent as possible, we use a third-party forensic firm to, to make that determination.
Okay. So are you driving less with sirens today than you did...
Yes, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Any other questions on that part?
So, and now, I just want to back up and say that I have every confidence that our EMS system will report in full transparency what you want. I would ask you, on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City, do not ask for averages. They are not accurate, and they obscure the issue. It's as simple as this. One call is a zero response time, one call is a 20-minute response time, the average is 10 minutes. Does that really give you the whole story? It doesn't. That's the benefit of fractiles. I would challenge you to ask, all your public safety agencies to ask in fractiles, because then you'll know 5% by 5% or 10% by 10%, you know, what is the actual performance in terms of time. But again, part of what we're saying here is, it's more than just time, it's, it's the care that's delivered. So if we get the next slide, please. So this is, this is the impact on the Fire Department in Oklahoma City. You can see that for the year prior to the change, so we would be talking November 1st of 2012 through October 31st of 2013, that for 90% of the calls in Oklahoma City, the typical on-scene time before an IMSA ambulance arrival, well, at the 90th percentile, was 6:58, okay, essentially seven minutes. So 90% of the calls, the Oklahoma City Fire Department was on-scene prior to IMSA, seven minutes or less, okay? Since this change, what we're sharing with you here is a month-by-month impact that you can see, and not surprisingly, if you allow for extended ambulance response standards, it goes to, it goes to sense that you may have more time of the Fire Department on-scene. And again, this is at 90%. So you can see where the, you can see there's an immediate rise in November of 2013, not unanticipated, but again, this is for, this is for all the calls, and typically, well, at 90% or less, it's three minutes and 16 seconds over this, you know, 14, 15-month interval, okay? But this gets at how this EMS system is coordinated. It's not two systems, it's not the Oklahoma City Fire Department system and the IMSA AMR system, it's an EMS system, which then shows best in this next slide, which then looks at, okay, what is the absolute mission time? So the Oklahoma City Fire Department, they might be on-scene, and they are, up to 90% of the, at 90% of the time, 3:16 or so, okay? But if you look at the absolute scene time, okay, then that impact is less. And that impact is less because the EMTs and the paramedics, and the advanced EMTs and the Oklahoma City Fire Department are using the exact same treatment protocols that the EMTs, advanced EMTs, and paramedics are using on IMSA ambulances. And so we have that very carefully coordinated so that from the patient's perspective, it might be multiple agencies, but it is one system of care, it is one standard of clinical care, it is one treatment plan. So then what is started by EMTs or medics in the Oklahoma City Fire Department is then seamlessly continued by the EMTs and medics working at IMSA and AMR. So again, just so that you know, this is not specific only to Oklahoma City, if you'll look at the next couple of slides, this shows the time of Tulsa Fire Department on-scene, and you can see the rise there, and again, 90th percentile at 2:56, okay? And again, 90th percentile at 2:56, okay? And then the next slide shows you their increase in scene time. So the numbers are markedly similar, and I think it becomes all the more important. And I hope that you have confidence in your EMS system, because while both places are certainly nice major metropolitan areas to live, there is no question, geographically, this is a much bigger city. And so even with far more square mileage to cover, you can see that the time differences are really negligible when you look at the two cities in comparison. So if we get the next slide. So to your question about, well, you know, are we using less red light and siren and what potential safety impact that has? Well, look here, at the year prior to these response time changes, and at the same time, with those response time changes came the ability for priority-two calls to no longer respond red light and sirens. You can see in a year that almost 70% of the calls, we're no longer using red light and siren. 70%. 125,000 calls between Oklahoma City and Tulsa. And if you've ever been in your personal vehicle, as I know you have, and you have seen an EMSA ambulance come down the street behind you, or coming in opposing traffic, or from a side street, you have seen what I've seen, and you've seen many, a well-meaning citizen, get a little confused as to what exactly they're supposed to do. Do they pull to the left? Do they pull to the right? Do they stop right away? Do they just keep going? Do some citizens ignore emergency apparatus? Well, sure, they do. Not right, but they do. And so when an emergency apparatus is operating in red light and siren mode, that creates a lot of uncertainty for the public around them, and when uncertainty happens, collisions can happen, and they do happen. And so if we can take 125,000 red light and siren responses out, then that is a good thing if it doesn't come at a clinical impact. If it comes at a serious clinical impact, it's no longer a good thing. It's all a risk-benefit analysis. So if we get the next slide. So in September of last year, there was some focused discussion on this exact topic at the EMSA Board of Trustees, and this is what I said at the time. And it's still true, is that I am not aware of a single instance, almost 200,000 calls a year, I am not aware of a single instance in the area that we serve in metropolitan Oklahoma City and Tulsa where these changes in response time standards, the changes in how ambulances are responding to priority-two calls, the changes in how for fire departments that are still responding to all calls by their choice, typically still with red light and sirens, they're not required to do so from a physician's perspective. They're not required to do so from the medical control board's perspective. That's the individual fire chief's perspective. I will say that you have a very forward-thinking fire chief here in Oklahoma City, and Oklahoma City is not just the largest fire department in our EMS system. They are certainly one of the most progressive. And as you likely know, they don't respond to every call anymore that comes to our medical desk. And the reason for that is so that they can be more readily available for the truly time-sensitive life-threat cases and being able to immediately respond and make the impact that we want them to make in those cases. So there have yet to be any instances. Now, you might say, well, that's because nobody's asked you to look at anything, or that's because you have an unlisted phone number, or that's because you have an unlisted email, and nobody knows how to get a hold of you, and that's why you don't know these calls exist. I can assure you, we have 4,200 EMTs and medics that know how to get a hold of me 24/7, and I welcome anybody to bring concerns. There is zero instances where I or a paramedic that's working full-time in the office of the medical control board, in my office, there are zero instances where somebody brings a case to us and says, could you please look at this, that we do not complete a formal investigation of that. We have 100% track record of looking into everything that comes before us. If you have a citizen in your district that says, well, I'm concerned about this call, send them our way, and I promise you, and I promise your constituents, that we will look at that call, and we do not look at it with a predetermined bias of, oh, there's not a difference here, and we just got to go prove it. We look at as, show us the facts, and the facts will lead us to the proper conclusion. So, next...
Can I just ask you? I mean, it seems like those are unmeasurable. I mean, you couldn't possibly know the clinical outcomes, because you're not following them through the hospital. You don't know if an open fracture that's sitting in the dirt ends up getting infected or not, or has multiple irrigation disagreements because they sat in the dirt longer. You don't know strokes, what kind of neurological outcomes they have. I mean, cardiac outcomes, I get it, if they die or not. But in terms of clinical outcomes, and you're couching it that it's just the ones you know about, but these are, whether somebody sits in the dirt with an open fracture for 10 or 20 or 25 minutes, we don't really have a way of measuring those clinical outcomes, do we?
Well, what I do have a way of measuring is what I'm getting to. And I understand this is a little bit long-winded, but I'm trying to get to these points. I'm acknowledging your questions, but I'm trying to get to these points, too. And so what I'm saying is, we do have some methodologies to look at these. And so one way that we look at this is, as I said, we can code these requests for 911 Emergency Medical Care up to 1,200 ways. And we do. And we look at every single one of these 1,200 codes. So let me tell you what we've been doing, is for each one of these codes, if you'll get me the next slide, please, this is an example of what we're looking at. So a 6 Charlie 01, which really means nothing to you in that vernacular, it means a lot to our emergency medical dispatchers, is abnormal breathing, but not such that we look at it as an immediate life threat, okay? So this could be an asthma attack that someone is speaking reasonably comfortably over the phone, or says, well, you know, I'm having a little trouble, but, you know, they're still able to... they're still able to speak clearly and that type of thing. So, you know, a lot goes in this category. And the reason I picked this is because it's 2% of our calls. And you go, well, 2% is... hey, when you have 1,200 codes and one code is 2%, you know, that's a big code. And so if you look at what happened in the year prior to this response time change, when Paramedics Plus had the contract, you know, pre-11-113, and they were responding red light and sirens to everything. So all those calls, all 1,412 calls, got a red light and siren response. Only 66 of those calls, in the expert clinical assessment and judgment of the paramedic, warranted a return to the hospital with red light and sirens, okay? So you have a 4.67% return to the hospital, red light and sirens, after these response time changes, okay? So now, the priority of the call has not changed. It's always been a priority-two call. And I want to stress to citizens, every call we take seriously, but there are some prioritization of calls. You can't say all 1,200 are the exact same medical severity, right? And so since AMR's had this contract, November 1st, 2013, now beyond, that same code, we're responding non-red light and siren. So whereas there was 1,412 hot responses, now there are 1182 cold responses in this timeframe since the 11-113 contract until, you know, I think the 1st of May is when we did this last analysis. So of that 1182, 49 then got returned to the hospital hot, which is actually a smaller percent. Now, I don't want to overstate this point. I'm not saying that making a change in response time standards and responding without lights and sirens, instead of lights and sirens, I'm not saying that suddenly made these abnormal breathing folks healthier as a result. What I'm saying is, we're looking at this in each of these 1,200 categories, and while we, you know, Councilor Shadid, while this is not necessarily the same as looking at outcomes two weeks or 30 days after the event, at least in every instance that we can, and using all of the parameters we can, we are not seeing deleterious clinical impacts. Now, some of these calls that, you know, I'm happy to take calls from physicians that are concerned. And I have yet to take a call from... we have some very good cardiology and neurology and, you know, other specialty care here in Oklahoma City. I have yet to take a call from a cardiologist, or a neurologist, or an ICU doctor that has said, you know, we think there's a real problem with this patient outcome, and we think there's probably something to do with the EMS care with this outcome, and, you know, we wondered about the timeliness of response. So now, this being said, you may say, well, but if everything looks pretty good, do you think we could even extend the response times more? Do you think we could take 10:59 and make it 12:59? Or do you think we could take 24:59 and make it 29:59? Because that's what they do in Fort Worth, which is actually a very good EMS system. It's set up pretty similar to what we have here in Oklahoma City. The fire department there doesn't have paramedics by and large, but they've been operating with a 30-minute standard for a long time. So, you know, would I say that we should extend the response times further? I wouldn't. I wouldn't. I don't mean to be flip about it. I grew up in Oklahoma City. It's a lovely city. I'm glad to be back home. I spent a good part of my childhood either thinking, and this is just my personal belief system, which I'm not trying to put on anybody else, I spent a good part of my childhood growing up watching tornadoes dance across wheat fields and saying, either God has an interesting way of showing his love, or he's just reminding us that we're not in control. And so we have no shortage of natural disasters in this community. We unfortunately have serious man-made disasters in the history of this community, and I would say we are at a good spot from a clinical impact standpoint where we're at. I would not extend those response time standards, because if you do that, you probably are looking at a little bit less capability of an EMS system. And I think we need the capability that we have for the day-to-day needs, and certainly for the unusual needs. You know, you bring up the rains in May. I mean, flooding, we make a big deal about tornadoes in Oklahoma. The reality is flooding kills more people nationwide each and every year than tornadoes ever think about. So, can I get the next slide? So that's what I wanted to share. This is my direct email. Nobody reads that but me. I, you know, I don't have somebody that screens it and then lets me know what I need to read and what I don't need to read. Any of you, any citizen, can contact me directly if you have a concern about a situation. And my promise to you is that we will take it seriously, and we'll look into it. And that is our direct office number here in Oklahoma City as well. We have full-time paramedics in the office that will assist me in that as well. So I'm happy to answer, you know, more questions. I just wanted to bring this in some significant detail to you. Councilor Shadid is right. You know, you have a medical practice in which you take care of 200,000 people a year. You're not going to know every single detail of every single encounter. Hospitals aren't going to know that either, taking care of hundreds of thousands of patients. But we honestly make every effort possible to not only train for the best care, but to give the best care, and then assure that we gave the best care possible. I will tell you that there are citizens of this city, just like there are Tulsa, that may have an honest difference of opinion about how satisfied they are with the EMS service in terms of the wait for a fire apparatus response, or for an EMSA ambulance response. And that becomes something a bit out of my authority or ability to comment on, other than from a public relations, public expectation standpoint. What I can tell you is, the physician medical director, we have solid clinical care. The response time standards have the impact that I've shared with you today, and we are honestly not seeing detrimental impact to the citizens that we're taking care of. If we were, I promise you, we would do something differently.
Dr. Goodlow, thank you. I'm going to let that be the final word. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Thank you for coming down. All right. We're on to citizens to be heard. I want to thank the citizens who have stuck through this and be with us. I'm going to ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less. The first is Sue Murphy.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Sue. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Sue Murphy. My address is 6004 Queensgate Road in Oklahoma City. And I'm here to speak to you about the low-cost housing that's proposed, the Hope Harbor Project on Lyerwood Lane. There are several things that I'd like to just bring to your attention, to let you mull over and think about. I'm a member of the board of the Woodlake Association there. It's Block E there. There are 73 individually-owned condominiums. About 90% of those condominiums are owned by senior citizens. So in fact, we've got a low-cost housing project right there for senior citizens. That's right on the corner of 63rd and Lyerwood Lane. If you've ever been over there, that's that little area bounded by Rockwell and MacArthur, Wilshire, and 63rd, it is extremely densely populated. Extremely. We are surrounded by large apartment buildings. However, none of them three-story, which is what this gentleman proposes to do, to drop a three-story unit in there. If you've ever gone down Lyerwood Lane, you'll know that that's a shortcut that people take, a cutoff, so they don't have to go up Rockwell. And it's a very narrow two-lane street. In fact, Lyerwood Lane dead ends on 63rd. So if we've got cars there at the stoplight turning left, the city bus cannot turn right. The guy that's making the turn either has to back up and give way, or the city bus has to wait until that traffic is cleared before he can even make that turn. Just things that I think, I don't think there's been a traffic study done about that. Let's see, what else did I want to tell you about? The three-story building is really...
Where is this... where is it supposed to be? Can you tell me?
It's supposed to be, the address that they propose is 6421 Lyerwood Lane. I own the condominium at 6421 Lyerwood Terrace, which would be just behind that. My 80-year-old sister...
So what's on the property now? Is it vacant? Is it a...
It is vacant now.
Okay.
And I know that something's going to go there, and everybody is very nervous about what's going there.
You're concerned about density?
I'm concerned about the density that's going to be dropped in there. I'm concerned about the height of the apartment building that's going there. I'm also concerned about the money that we've agreed to give this gentleman from Florida to drop this in there. That little area right there, we go around the periphery of that thing, and we pick up our own trash. If there are trees on the easement, and we ask the city to help us do that, the answer's no. We have to take care of those trees, even though we didn't plant them. If we tell the city that there's a flooding problem, there is no drainage between Rockwell and the next street down, and we have flooding in that area, they tell us that they're sorry, and I agree with that, that we have to surface our own streets there. There's nobody there to help us do that. And this kind gentleman from Florida has come and agreed to do a noble thing, and you're going to give him $500,000, or you're going to oversee the $500,000. I'm kind of unclear which. I want to know what line he got into, because we are getting in the wrong line. We need help also, and I just need somebody to know that...
He's applied for the $500,000, but it hasn't been granted.
Good. Well, it's our money. The money belongs to all of us.
Right. Yeah, let me ask staff if they can keep James and I informed about the process here and the next step, so we can look after it for you.
I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Tracy Robin Pease?
I live at 1624 Northwest 33rd Street, Oklahoma City, 73118, and I have a very short presentation for you. I'm representing... I'm representing Military Park Residents Association, and what we have is we have a proposal for sign toppers. Military Park has 18 streets entering the neighborhood, and we have no signage. Nothing identifies our neighborhood as Military Park. And on the second page here, you can see a map of where our neighborhood is located, along with the yellow dots are proposed sign topper locations. These are all residential areas. The second page is a list of the actual street list of where the signs are proposed to go. In doing some research, well, first off, we were inspired by the Asian District signs that are on Class A, because that's one of our bordering streets. So in doing some research, I've discovered that Tulsa has a sign topper program. They do a round sign topper. They put it on the back of the stop signs. Owasso has a sign topper that goes on top of existing street signs. And they were inspired, I've talked to Jerry Fowler in Owasso, they were inspired by the program of Richardson, Texas. So Richardson, Texas, if you look on their website, they have a fantastic website. They have a five-minute video that tells all about their program. They have 18 neighborhoods that use the sign toppers. So, and then I have one more page that shows some examples in other cities. These are all things that I found on the internet. So for what we're talking about these, this is our neighborhood watch sign. This is our logo, and this is the finish that we want to have on the sign toppers. Then I had ordered some sign toppers as examples. These aren't the finish that we want to use. These have a reflective finish, but we actually want to use the just regular white finish. And so what we want to do is put these on top of the street signs to identify the boundaries of our neighborhood.
Okay.
And we really haven't gotten a clear way on how to do that yet. So, that's it.
We appreciate it. Thanks for coming down. Let us look into it.
So I, I ask, we've met this weekend and talked about, they've been working with our traffic commissioner and have tried to go through and get an answer, and I guess have got, well, they haven't got an answer.
We haven't got an answer on how we could proceed with this.
And so we're not sure if it's revocable permit, or we got some, our traffic commissioner got some indication that maybe there was a legal issue, but we haven't been able to identify that. Obviously, we did this in the Asian District. I think it's maybe done in Heritage Hills. So I guess they're just asking for help in terms of process. Do they apply for a revocable permit? Do we, does anybody see an objection or a problem with moving forward? I mean, to me, it seems like a great way to identify the neighborhood, to be, to grow a sense of community. And I'd like to see it go elsewhere in Ward 2, but I just, we need help because we're not...
We're in a standstill right now.
We're in a standstill.
Okay. Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Councilor Shadid, this was brought to my attention just this weekend, but we're still researching this. There's possibly some city ordinance that would give us some guidelines, but we haven't made it all the way through. And so Public Works is working closely with planning. Planning Department was instrumental in the Asian District signage that was done as a part of the streetscape that was there. But we haven't found anything in the current ordinances that provide for it. The one concern we do have is whether or not, depending on the signage, it might be confusing to motorists as to that being the street name. So we're needing to work through some of those issues as well, just making sure that's not confusing with some of the existing signage. We just need some more time.
But is there, is there a legal issue? I mean, here, there's, they got a $5,000 grant from OG&E, so they're paying for the signage. So you're putting private things on public signage. Is there, is there a legal issue there, or...
I just can't answer that today. I think we're going to need just some more time to review that with municipal councilors as well.
If it's a city street sign, street signal, it wouldn't, obviously wouldn't be a problem with it, but...
It would not be a problem.
I wouldn't think so.
So they just apply for...
But some of them, it depends on which, you have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, we're breaking some new ground here, although there are some up for the Asian Districts. I think we'd really want to come up with some guidelines, because we don't want this to be open Pandora's box and having, people want to put private things on and commercial or other messages out there. I think, you know, we want to limit it to identification for neighborhood associations or something along those lines. I'm not sure that we're comfortable...
I agree.
...because this is the first I've heard of this.
That's why we're bringing it. That's why I asked them to come and let's have a conversation and get, I don't know that we want to do just case-by-case, and it's just a...
No, you have to have, you have to have guidelines and a process, but you were talking about the legal issues.
Yeah.
I mean, you might have a particular street pole that's owned by OG&E. That's, that's the only potential legal issue I can see. I think the city is going to own the, just the streets, the street name signs.
But you don't see any federal, our traffic commissioner was told that there might be some federal or state issue. You don't see anything like that. So really, it's just now we don't have, we don't have guidelines, and we need to think about what kind of guidelines there would be.
I would think so. This is the first I've heard of a councilman, so let us, let us see what...
Yeah, we have a couple more weeks to look at this, to let us fully investigate. Again, it's just, it's only a few days old to me, and I think that they have visited with the traffic commission, but I need to also research what was done at that level, too.
Okay. Thanks.
Joe Serge Nelson.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Nice to see you today. I'm basically kind of here because of this little article I'm sure you all read about tall grass and everything. It really is funny, isn't it? It beats me griping all the time. But anyway, I had a solution to this, since it does seem to be quite an interest to a lot of people, as well as Mr. Kupel and yourself and you, what have you. I noticed where you all use the word in here, sharing, the mowing facilities, or however they do it. I'm not into that yet, but I mean, would it be better to, since you're talking about specific areas, to alternate rather than share the facilities along 66? And that part, if I can get with Mr. Couch at a later time, I can work it out, or I can do it free. If the city will give me a little tools to do it with. I'm retired. I don't badger the city anymore. And I like that. It's the best smile I've got out of him since I've known him. But anyway, I want to compliment you on the letter that you sent, I answered a mine. I do believe this is the gentleman hearing question, and I spoke to Eric a while ago, and I need to talk to him about a matter over by my home. That construction project is getting way out of hand. And, but anyway, I would like to help you with this. And I'm awfully close to, like I say, I live on MacArthur, and I'm just six blocks from Crystal Lake, which is taking off big time. And I want to commend Mr. McAteem, my councilman. He's going to appear at our grand opening at our Neighborhood Alliance, which I am the president now. And we've already put our rules together for our patrols, both criminal as well as the park rules. You write them, you break them, you're going to answer for them. But the fact is, a lot of the neighbors out there really enjoy it because we've got some crime activity out there, breaking and entering, things like that. But we're going to get a control on it, and we're going to be a better part of Oklahoma City. And that's what we're looking for. And nice to see you all. It really is. You're doing really good, too, Mr. Sonziver. Mayor, ain't it pleasant when I don't come in and you know what all the time? Nice to tell you all.
All right. That's it. We're adjourned.